Councilor here. Councilor here. Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilor. Payanexa.
Yeah.
And then. Councilor Rostow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there you have it.
So. Audience of citizens now, we obviously do have a couple of things later on the agenda, but we can take some comments about whatever's on our agenda or whatever else you want to talk to us about during the audience of citizens. If some of you are here for, whatever you're here for, and I had some folks in the audience from the conservation meeting, you could do it now or during that discussion, whatever your pleasure is in the same, I'm guessing on the YMCA too. I see a few people on the sign up sheet. For the Y in particular, it's a presentation from the Y. It's just a general presentation. We in the council have never had one from the Y. Ultimately, the plan will be we have a new study architect here in town looking at the community senior center of the town they built. And we have, you know, looking at the YMCA for options. And then we have the committee that looked at it two years ago now, the original plan. So the goal would be once the the Y make their presentation tonight, take notes, ask a few questions, but you know, hold, we can hold those. And once the architect is supposed to be done in March.
May 10.
May 10, okay, so may. So, May 10, after he's completed that, we'll have probably a presentation all encompassing of all the information that we have. I'd like to do one at the senior center. I want to do one at Burling High School, at least two, maybe three. Just make sure the community has plenty of time that they definitely talk about it and hopefully present the new plan to everyone who wants to go to the meeting. So that's kind of the plan going forward. So we're a long way off, certainly no decisions on any of that tonight. Or not even close to any of it, but we're happy to hear whatever you have to say. But you will have many other bites of the apple as we go forward with the community senior center. So anyway, so I'll go on my list first of the audience of citizens, we have Ryan Malloy first up. Yeah, please name and address for the record.
Ryan, I need your name and address in the microphone.
Those extras up here if anybody. So I think you guys may have applied.
Yeah, I left your message.
You did?
I made it bigger tonight, Ryan, so it's okay.
I did not get that.
That's okay.
Again, I'll try to be respectful.
No, no problem. You want to hear a problem.
I'm here in regard to, and let me preface by saying I don't want to be here. Right? Respectfully, I come here to see this, right? This looks great, but I don't. Personally, I have to. This is in regards to Bright Peas, Fuller Way. Town manager knows we have. The sound and smell of that business is just out of control. And I'm going to leave my emotions out of it. Put the slide together. I want to try to stick to facts. But basically, and I'm going to make a quick concession, I put them on the left side at the bottom. I actually like their mission statement. I like what they're about, right? They're trying to recycle food for livestock. Does a lot for the environment. However, their current operating model gets at the detriment of the citizens. Right? That's the best way to say. So one, that doesn't outweigh our health, right? So I just want to preface with that because I do like the mission stat. I don't want it to sound like I'm just fooling the company. I actually like the owner. But again, not at the detriment of citizens. So the problem, same, a lot of you know this. The levels of noise and smell pollution emanating from this business is impacting hundreds of rural citizens, business owners and business employees, and that's been verified by me. And there's a petition. If you see at the top right, you can use your cell phone. You can scan that and it will bring you to the petition website, but right now I checked it before I came in here. We're at eighty seven signatures and that's with the part of the tribe. I just started to query the businesses locally, which includes the business owners themselves and the property owners, and their response has just been staggering. People are frustrated. So if I go to the impact, citizens are unable to sleep at night due to noise. Citizens are woken up in the middle of the night. That's how this can be. Citizens not wanting to go outside in their respective yards due to suffocating putrid smells. This is infrequent. It really depends on the way the wind blows. If there's a fog, it's hard for the smell to get above the the cloud line. So it just sits on your property. Extreme stress put on local homeowners for various reasons. Stress of having to deal with limited local and state assistance. I want to be very clear, I'm not blaming anyone at all, right? I'm here to try to change legislation and not talk about who did what wrong, right? I'm here to try to get some change. And again, I don't think any of you guys had a hand in the legislation or lack thereof that got us here. Right? So it's not fair me to blame anybody. Everybody does. I need help now. I was supposed to say that especially as well, so people don't pick out when you get it. Property values of local businesses and homes are currently at risk, and this has been quite a bit of feedback from homeowners and not building owners. You know, businesses that are right next to it. You know, I had one owner in particular say he thought his value would be decreased by fifty percent. Because how could, how could they bring a realtor to his property when these smells are just awful? Search is awful. Task of Ford, they actually have their own petition and then they started signing on to our petition, which started about a year ago. Their staff and it's impacting their operation of sales. Obviously bringing somebody outside to sell a eighty thousand dollar vehicle and smell breath is not too good. Employees stating, these are employees who work nearby, that they felt sick at work. You can actually see that in Google reviews and I've received that feedback from numerous employers, employees stating that they no longer can enjoy walks outside, so they can't even go out at lunch. Right? They can't take a break anymore and go for a walk. That's how bad it's smelled. Headaches reported by many individuals, these are people who work there. In that area, in me, myself and my wife are headaches. And again, this is suspect, I can't prove it, right? But have gone up fivefold, right, in the last year alone. The amount of migraines, I'm not one to get a lot of, I get tons of. And I can tell you that they burn a lot of fully based soy products, which are known to have cancer causing effects, especially if it's cancer. And also cause headaches, right? So again, not to be a fear minder, trying to deal with with facts. And additionally, if you just Google food recycling lawsuits, three words, food recycling lawsuits, you'll see that this is an emerging market over the last five years. And what happens in any emerging market is there's a lack of regulation. Especially in a time of economic downfall, the last thing the state has is money to regulate a new market. Let me just read the story. Investigation findings. Excuse me. The sounds and smells have been reported from one to two miles away. Now, I own a small landscaping company here in town. I do ITV. I was actually had a property about two miles away, two blocks away. And the wind was blowing right at me. I smoked Bright Peas. I was like, you gotta be kidding me. I laughed. I'm like, this is crazy that it got this far. The noise is running above state DEEP levels. Now, this is a kicker. This is what really as a property owner, citizen of the town and state, this is why we need legislation, but this is what bothers me. So the DEP, there's two aspects, noise and smell. They are above the DEEP state threshold. There's a table, which I didn't include here, but if you Google that, you can find it. And it shows the three classes of properties. And during the daytime hours and the nighttime hours, it sways up in their allowable decibels. The allowable decibel at night in their zone is sixty decibels. At night, they're operating at eighty to ninety. The problem with that is when it sways day to night and you could see the logic in the table. At night, if they keep it under the threshold by default, they're going to be under the residential threshold. But because they're not, they're above both thresholds twenty-four hours a day. It's absolutely wild. And furthermore, because I consulted with a lawyer on this, I don't want to go that route. I felt like I had to. They're operating at a frequency which is known to bother human beings. So regardless of decibels, this sound, once you hear it, you can't shake. It's like you're using your mind and not the only one. Please don't feel this is a pity, right? This is just countless citizens saying that they can't sleep. It's driving bonkers. Some are here. They came to support. So again, DP sets the threshold. Here's the kicker. DP defunded the group that could enforce it. I have them apologizing to me on the phone twice. We want to help you. We know it's a problem and do anything. Okay, so I come to the town. There's no lawyer. Right? So what do I do? I get a lawyer. Right? Upwards of seventy grand this is going to cost me. Right? So what do I do?
Before you do that.
Yep.
We are organized, we're, it's just.
I did hear that.
Yes.
And I was very excited.
Yeah. Very. We talked about that when you got, yeah.
Well, that's really right.
Yeah.
So. So. So they're above the levels. Nobody's going to force them. As they have the ordinance, I'm very happy to hear that. So I consult with an environmental lawyer. I get great feedback on both aspects. From noise. I have him dead to rot. He's operating above the frequency. All it takes is a sound study, three, four grand. We go to court and he loses. It's that simple, right? Noise or smell, not so cut and dry. So instead of me spending that money, I said, you know what? I'm going to call the business owner. You give him a chance, right? And see, see if he'll fix this. And he has, right? So he's committed the funds to fixing it. Supposedly it's inbound in the next week or two to the foundation. Right? However, I'm still here in regards to the noise complaint because what do businesses look to do? They look to scale. Right? And I've asked him what his governance is around these implement implementations he's doing, proposed noise and they assume smell. He doesn't know. He doesn't know. And that's not a knock on him. He's a great guy, but it shows me that he he's new to the industry. Because I've been at manufacturing for fifteen years in IT, and I can tell you every aspect of that for big companies is governed. Either quarterly, monthly, semi-annually, annually. You're not allowed to say I don't know. Because there's ramifications to say, I don't know. So what scares me is what's to say he doesn't buy, Raptor goes out of business next. And he says, oh, great. Here's another plan. Right? And what he told me is he didn't have the capital funding to do this in the beginning. So what's to say he doesn't say that again? Right? And then I'm back at square one because of the lack of noise. And so I I'm hugging you right now because that's my concern, right? And that's why I'm pushing this because with noise, he's not going to be the first. It's not going to be the last. Not going to be the last company to do this. And that when the state is defunding programs and groups that can enforce this, we need, we need a means as a town to legislate it, right? There's no option if they defund it. Right? So I'm so pleased to hear.
So, so just for heart, I'm getting, so that whole unit is, doesn't exist on the state?
They, they told me that they were defunded, at least the group to enforce it.
Oh, how nice. Anyway.
And they apologized. They were so nice, but I'm like, okay, well, it's great. So they operate twenty-four seven, right? So this one, I put limited verbiage in their business license and that's feedback I got anecdotal. I didn't see the actual business license, but I heard this twice talking to the zoning gentleman that it's very vague on what their business license states as far as operations. Because the other aspect I said is they just shut down at night. Right? Can they run six in the morning to ten at night? Let us sleep. They can't do that. Here's another kicker. Why can't they do that? Because the state imposed legislation that requires them to burn everything that they intake, they cannot send it to a landfill. So what if he gets it? He has to burn. So me as a citizen, now I have a group DEP supposed to be helping me with state legislation, which actually makes it worse. Right? See the point? Finds the irony in this, right?
That's, that's right.
I'm not surprised. And again, I'm not going to, right? DP has been to site at least two to three times that I know of. Task of Ford was about a year ago. Regarding the smell, now I'll get a little into this. The smell is because it's not a true pollutant. This is a new industry. It's not regulated, so we don't really know what a lot of the right? And smell is discretionary. So if it doesn't reach a true pollutant level set by the state, it then becomes a nuisance which then requires civil action or town legislation, which from the town standpoint, I'm going to defend you guys, also gets tough because how do you classify nuisance when it's discretionary? So from my end, again, consulted with the lawyer. And I do feel like this is a landslide. Again, do I want to go that route? No. We have well over, you know, right around a hundred people and I, I barely even put that. I think I can get two hundred plus signatures like that. Including business owners, building owners. I haven't even touched the guy who owns Joblot. I don't know if any of you guys have run the Joblot lately, but that thing is going. It smells awful. Like going from your car in. So again, some heaven hitters in the town that I knew if that was my building. Who are you to be in that next to my business? I like, I'd be upset about that. So again, this is just scratching the surface. So they labeled this as a sweet bakery smell. Right? Completely in it here. I don't know. I don't know who the heck labeled that, right? Again, as many have reported, putrid, decaying smell that emanates for miles. So while I appreciate it, I do like the mission statement. I was born at night, not last night. I don't know what the heck they're talking. But it's, it's just categorically. Okay. And then recommendations. So work with Bright Peas to implement a noise suppression system. So this is one that I've been working with them on. Our manager stepped up to help me out. And zoning has stepped up to help me out. And I really what got it over the bar was me threatening the lawsuit and he found some capital funds. But I still have concerns around, like I said, scalability and the lack of a noise ordinance, which I think that's going to be solved with what you just said. So breeze past the town should revisit the noise ordinance. That's music to my ears. I also put the town should look at business onboarding practices and ask industry applicable questions. So it shouldn't be generic questions, right? This is a new emerging market. We should ask some industry applicable questions to decipher if this business is going to cause a nuisance ahead of time. Right? Again, not saying anybody did anything wrong, but just some feedback on how could we impose something like this to improve in the future? Right? And then a nuisance ordinance needs to be looked at for smells, right? And I said before, it's discretionary. I do think it's achievable, but for both aspects, noise and smell, I don't think there should ever be a scenario where the town has no means of recourse. That's scary, right? You literally have a business operating low in your town, bothering hundreds of people impacting property nodes. And again, no, no, no. But there's nothing we could do because some of the state aspects are gone. So we have no choice but to create town legislation. So how about the citizens? So I said a lot there. Thought I'd go a little faster. These things are all crap listening to that, but that's it. And I'll leave this paper with you. You guys can contact me anytime. There's so much more that I don't say, so much more uncovered, but I think I just want to say.
Well, we appreciate you coming and certainly we've been surprised a bit. I know Roche has been working with you and I guess the, I know you mentioned on your sheet, the, the equipment is ordered or arrived for the noise? Is that, is that?
Supposedly inbound this week. There's a temporary solution that they put in place late last week, which has been helping. You can still hear that frequency at night when the graphic words dies down.
Yeah.
But the new solution they're implementing is supposed to be. All of that, but again, concern is scalability. They're, they're business. They're going to look to make money. They're going and I want to make sure that if you add six more stacks, that's done the same day. It shouldn't be after the fact.
Is he, did I hear, I think Roche might have told me, he turned, is he turning it off at night between eleven and seven or what? Is that happening? Do you still hear it?
So when he got the temp fix, it's definitely running, but to be honest, now it's more like a white noise. I just so effortlessly hear that frequency that's troublesome. So it's supposed to be there. However, he did not do that until last Monday. Last Sunday night, I was woken up at three AM. I called the police dispatch because my lawyer said to document this every time. That's the only way I can do it. And dispatch said, I said, can you just ask the police? Cause they've done this before. Can they knock on the door and see if they could just pull down? And they said, no, they're working on a solution. Close to perfect. And I said, yeah, I know I'm helping with that, but you just not going to do it. Like I can't sleep. I got work in the morning. I can't sleep. And I was met without position. So I said, okay, I'll drive down. Don't do that. Don't do that. But I don't have time for that. I'm sorry. It's three AM. I just got woken up. I've been trying to handle this professionally. I have not been taking the hot head approach. But I said, let me go see if there's a foreman down there that can just throw this thing. Two cops won't be there very long. And I am pro police. The last thing I know that they have bigger fish to chop, right? I get that. So, you know, they were very nice, very order, but they said the same thing and they were protecting me. I got, I got their inferences. I understood what they were doing. They were saying, don't knock on the door because we don't want you to get trespass. Well, from my end, being a wise guy, I'm not saying I wanted to, but I kind of wanted to because how would that look? The optics of it? You know, the guy who's been begging for months and months to get some help gets trespassed because he can't sleep. I mean, come on, that's as ironic as it gets. And they were laughing. The cops were laughing. So anyways, we spoke for a little bit. I left. But to answer your, your statement, the reason why they turned it down is Monday, I gave them an ultimatum. Turn this thing off tonight. And I'm filing the lawsuit. I don't care if you have a solution inbound. I will go for past damage. And up to that point, I had not said that. I don't want damages. I just want it to be turned down. I feel like that's a very reasonable concession. So I spoke to him again at five o'clock. He had not committed to it. He said that his lawyers told me to stop talking to him or him to stop talking to me. And I said that short sighted because if we hang up the phone call, I'm filing my lawsuit. So I, and I literally said this to him and said, it's time to put on your big boy pants. What do you want to do? And he said, we'll shut it off. And it's been shut off.
It's continued to be shut off.
Been shut off tonight. Now that recently they did turn it back on because they have a temp solution. That's exactly what it took to get him to turn it off.
And this noise equipment should and the noise, the, the fittings that he's supposed to put on now.
Absolutely. And if you guys actually implement like you're saying.
Yes.
Noise ordinance will cover it from all bounds because at that point the state is more, it's a little relevant, their threshold if we have a needs to stop.
And that's unfortunately the problem. When you call the police, they can't do anything because there's no ordinance.
Right.
And, and we don't have the equipment, which we will purchase once we get the noise ordinance passed.
I'm laughing again because I've been doing, I did a whole sound study for this. Oh, yeah. I got everything. Middle of the night, daytime.
Well, get it with.
Five, six different points sit in town.
Oh, let us not shake it. I don't know.
It's all pretty, but there's been well over D.
Yeah. And then there's the smell. You know, that's a
So the smell is complicated. Yeah. And that, that, that one that seriously needs to be looked for. You know, you spoke to him, you're aware in the last discussion where I told mind you, I have spoken very passionately at a, and just frustrated and was up since three AM. So he got a little bit, he's moved. But I told him he needs a plan for this one. He said, wow, you got it. Then I put all my capital into this sound and I said, to be honest, I don't care. Like that, that's, this is part of running a business, right? You're bothering a lot of people. You need to find the capital. I have to be quite honest and it's, it's, I feel like this is something that you should have done upfront. So to hear that you don't have the capital for it now is hard for me to, 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 well, I, I just don't get that. Like you're running a business. You made a mistake. It's okay. Do something about it. So he said he will put a plan together. Smell, and that's the last that we think.
All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely look at, at that too. Just one last question because I'm sorry, but it's important because it affects obviously in the larger part of our town, but it affects you too, every, I don't care if it's one person we're concerned. But is it the trucks coming in that smell, do you think? Or it's emanating from the, is there trucks of the, the waste material that comes?
Yeah.
The way it works.
So we should have a subsequent step.
We can talk about it.
That's part of it.
Yeah, okay.
But the, the main smell is from those stacks. It's just
The stacks, okay. Yeah.
Place and soldiers have complained about those trucks because there's, I think it's OSHA DEP regulation that running trucks. It's three or five minutes that they're allowed and they've been running, they run for hours parked down.
Yeah, that's another part of town that I don't want to see that. We've, we've been fighting that over these. I think we took care of these two years ago, but yeah.
Okay. So again, like I said, try to keep it to facts. I have a lot more I could give, but we can have a subsequent.
Yeah, yeah, we should talk after. I know we've been talking to get some more facts from you so we can craft what we need to do for the town to help alleviate this problem or something.
I have a little guy at home, somebody get home.
Yeah.
But you guys are welcome to call me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan Thurston.
Dan Thurston, sixteen Conlon Way. I'm here to talk about the multiple proposals for community centers. Thank you very much.
We haven't seen you before.
I know, I know. And honestly, the first thing I wanted to do is commend the council and town commissions on continuing to investigate multiple options to satisfy the statements of need, edit the statements of need and try to find a solution that best fits our town's needs and financial situation to really satisfy what the community wants and needs. A few things I wanted to bring up today, and try and keep it brief. First, just a reminder, as we're going to hear from the YMCA today, I'm really excited the Y is here. I'm excited to see the presentation. Just a reminder to the council, it's a, keep in mind, it's not the Y's responsibility to fulfill our statement of need. So as we start to consider what the Y is proposing, just keep in mind, it's our job to decide if it does, if it doesn't, if it's a part of the solution and how that works. And continue to communicate, communicate with the YMCA and with the commissions as they start to build this. Secondly, that their costs are an important consideration. I am down in town, teacher in town. My kids are two and four. I'm going to be here for a while. Anything that happens with these projects, I'm going to be paying for it. I'm fully aware of that. But keep in mind that as we talk about quad, that we need to keep in mind, but the needs were that were aligned and not get two penny wise dollar for what you about the process or about the result. Specific, some specific things specifically with aquatics, just ensuring that we get something that's going to support not only competitive diving, but seniors and their, and operatherapy, aerobics and their needs and then youth program, youth program as well. Big thing, just to, I want to, just to keep in mind, I think today's presentation, the Y is another, another step. It's good to see the Y back here. Why don't I say thank you to the Y for coming? Thank you to the Y for coming. Continue this project. YMCA was here a couple of years ago, almost two years ago now to your presentation. There's a lot of good information there about timeline, what the process would look like. Or counselors, just some questions I had, and I hope that we would continue to work towards answering. Last time we talked about what the timeline would look like, sustainability study that would need to be done in town. I'm curious. I'm excited to hear kind of if, where we are in that process, if we're in that process, or if not, kind of what the lead into that looks like. Does the town have to commit to that being option before a sustainability study is done? Uh, or if not, kind of what the lead into that looks like. Does the town have to commit to that being option before a sustainability study is done? And again, that may, may be answered here. Um, and then I know for fundraiser or for payment for how, how the project will be funded, it's brought up that fundraising is a big part of that. Uh, how long, uh, how long does fundraising take? What percentage for the fundraising needs to be raised? And a Wallingford is a project they're doing right now, four years or so into the fundraising. They're about halfway through the fundraising for that project. So just curious about timeline there and then kind of the likelihood of it happening as we're considering multiple options. Um, I am looking forward to hearing about what facilities the Y had in mind. Again, it's not the Y's responsibility to decide. To fulfill everything we're looking for. They're proposing something that's going to fulfill what members need. And that could possibly be a solution for town Berlin. Um, if, you may not be at that point in the process, but I do have the question of if we, uh, if we're not in that part of the process, do we have to commit to the YMCA option before finding out what those, what those facilities are, what's on the table? And kind of what that looks like. Then we got the answers, maybe we already be there. Like I said, today's presentation is a good step. I'm excited to hear kind of where we are in the process and the conversations with the YMCA. Uh, the town has security as needs and kind of looking big picture, you have aging, outbuildable facilities. Uh, East Berlin is in rough shape and personal fifty-seven years old. Uh, this is an opportunity to try and address that long term. Uh, outside of the pools, it's an opportunity to address senior housing in town and a paid senior center. It's an opportunity to address needs for the li- uh, for the library and social services that have been talked about with the community center space. Uh, and it's a cha- chance to create a place for people in Berlin, you know, families in Berlin to really community build. Uh, we were at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting a few weeks ago and we had a mother stand up. So talking about being in, uh, Farmington and Cromwell and Rocky Hill for all of these different things and building connections with families elsewhere. You know, I'm, I'm extended about this as an opportunity to really make a place where we, uh, it was a Berlin combined. Uh, but I, and I think in there, you started talking about this, about the, um, the meetings to get information out to the public.
Yeah.
I really like to see us actively, uh, actively, uh, inform the citizens of Berlin. Uh, about the project and the different options that are on the table, uh, maybe beyond just meetings, whether it's, uh, information sent out through the mail, uh, through the towns, uh.
Yeah.
Like that's the system. Just it's an important opportunity for the town. We can get the people in town informed about it. Uh, and what the options are, they could be a good way to get info from town, what people want.
Yeah, absolutely.
But thank you for, uh, for starting, starting down the road already.
Appreciate that. I appreciate your comments, though. Thank you. Next is, uh, Don. Welcome, Don.
Um, shout out to the most people we've driven. So just so everybody else in the audience knows, um, I was a member of the original subcommittee. Well, the last subcommittee, twenty-one, twenty-two. Where we provided the council with a report of the town-funded community and senior center and the Y option. Um, still a lot of work to be done even after that report and obviously the council is taking the next step. Um, I'm currently a part of a five-person group here in town comprised of myself as chair of Parks and Rec. Barbara Gombats is chair of commission on aging and three staff people, two for parks and rec and, uh, Tina Doyle from the senior center. To work with the new architect to, uh, reduce the current statement of needs by the Parks and Rec Commission and the Commission on Aging. And the goal there is asked by the council is to reduce the overall cost that was presented a couple of years ago. So I'm working with on that and that's the report that the mayor referred to that's due May tenth from the architect back to the town council. Chair of Parks and Rec and I've been a resident of Berlin for thirty-three years, brought up my kids and my, with my husband. So I, we, we met before with Mr. Benigni, John Benigni, and, um, you know, I, I do have the utmost respect for the Y. They have a great mission, uh, throughout our United States. And, uh, obviously have done a very good job here in Connecticut and of course, you know about the Meriden and Britton Y. Berlin is a part of that consortium. John also came to our twenty-one, twenty-two subcommittee. Uh, he had answered some of the questions our subcommittee had provided to him for. And those written answers are in the report that we provided to the town council. And I think Dan Thurston must have done some reading because a lot of what he said was in that report and I'm not going to repeat some of those things, but, um, but John Benigni also came and he, he's very upfront. You know, I mean, he's a straight shooter and, um, and so what I would ask in tonight's meeting, and if it's not tonight's meeting, I'll let you laugh. But, uh, a- anyway, if it's not appropriate tonight for you to cover, then certainly I would hope that the covers it with you in discussions. The council is looking at the Y option separately. And then we're doing the town funded, uh, to be brought back to the council. So, so based on the commission's statement of needs that, uh, John had previously, which we're going to reduce them, but overall the theme is the same. We really do the same types of functions we, we plan to do. Same type of functions with some additions in any new town-funded community center. So just ask the same question we asked before. Can the Y meet those statement of needs? And if you can't, the town still has those statement of needs. And then, you know, up to the council and others to decide how we approach it. In the towns of Meriden and Britain where the Y currently has facilities, they continue to have separate departments, you know, their senior center. Their, uh, community center, town pools, um, et cetera. And again, I'll just ask the question because I know it was, it's been asked. Would the Y actually supplement or replace the community and senior center?
Supplement. We're not, we wouldn't get rid of the senior center or maybe even the community center on a different formula.
Okay, alright, so.
That wouldn't be the plan.
Okay, and it.
So that's, I mean, you know, that's still all, everything going through the discussion, you know, we're not.
Right. We haven't seen that done in any other town either that would visit it, that, that replaced anything.
Right.
So if you do still, you know, you, we may decide that the Y is a good option. And then, you know, you still have your senior center, community center to some degree, however that works. And then again, those same statement of needs. And then back a couple of years ago, and again, it may have changed. The Y, uh, John mentioned that maybe somewhere around thirty-three thousand would be a good size for the town of Berlin based on the size. I think that's the size of the Meriden Y. And, um, and that would include a gym, fitness center and a non-competitive pool. Although the pool was kind of iffy just because, you know, pools cost money. And, you know, that might be up to discussion with the Y. And I just want to understand, is that still what is believed by the Y, the right size for Berlin? And, um, and if that's the case, if there's a new Y built in town, how much of that thirty-three thousand or whatever it might be would be, uh, used for childcare, you know, consolidations, if, if that's part of your plan to consolidate childcare into the facility? And then to, Dan said, just, you know, timelines, funding. We all, whether it's the town or the Y, you go for grants, you go for this, you know, you try and fundraise whatever you can do so that the town taxpayers or the Y itself wouldn't have to finance as much. Um, what, what would that look like based on your current model? Um, in the timeline. And then, um, you had mentioned the sustainability study, Dan mentioned it, but Meriden to Britain, Plainville, Southington Y. Otherwise in the state, can the Y afford another Y here in Berlin? No, that was something that you might have to do as part of the process to prove it out. Our report in twenty-two recommended that that be something that get done before you have any further discussions with the Y to make sure it can be something that can be done. I don't know where that stands or if that will be coming up in the future, but that is one thing that I think we should get done or someone should get done before we seriously consider this as a good option. And with that, I do appreciate you coming and, um, I look forward to your presentation. Thanks.
Okay, uh, and all those things you mentioned are open questions, you know, nothing decided. There's a lot more discussion on all of it. So we probably don't have all those answers tonight, but, um, that's why we're in the process of redoing it all now. So, you know, questions won't be answered as we get through the process. So, and yes, I'm gonna let.
Tim, Tim Thurston, one hundred Sawmill Drive in Berlin. Uh, first thing I want to do is say thank you to the, uh, community center, senior center committee members for all the hard work that they've done over the past, past couple of years. And hopefully that all your hard work can come to fruition with a building, right? The second one I do want, you know, it, it seems like us versus them with the, versus the YMCA, but I did want to say, you know, thank you to the Meriden Y. Uh, probably fifteen years ago, I went in front of the board of education every month to try to get a swim team, a boy's swim team in this town. And I nagged them and nagged them and nagged them and finally we got the boy's swim team. That's been a success ever since. But if it wasn't for the guys at the Meriden Y and, and to be honest, we did Platte High School, we would have never had them, right? They've been there, it's been a beautiful working relationship over fifteen years of that. So thank you very much. Uh, I have to preface this by saying a lot of things that I'm going to say are presumptive, presumptive. The way these meetings work, like I said, I don't know if I'm going to be able to ask questions after, uh, the Y is presented. That's why I want to ask the questions now. Uh, I will say I'm an advocate of a town-owned senior center, community center, uh, with an aquatic pool, okay? Uh, something that should be, should be done away. Okay, I'm not an, I'm really not an advocate of the Y coming in and not fulfilling the statement of needs that we have. Okay, I understand that we have the Houston statement of needs, that will come later. All right, if you'll bear my, uh, forgiveness here. Uh, this is a picture of the, the future, uh, Wallingford West Side, uh, I, uh, YMCA. And the reason I bring this here is not because of YMCA versus talent, but it's the facility itself. Right? Right here is the existing facility. It's twenty-six thousand square feet. Please keep that number in mind, twenty-six thousand square feet. Well, the proposal is an aquatic center. Oh, sorry, can you hear me? That is going to be about twenty-five thousand square feet. Okay, so it's going to be about fifty thousand square feet. Right now they have, they have a gym, they have, uh, weight rooms, they have meeting rooms. And it's a, it's a YMCA, so they're, they're basically home to their customer, right? Why are they building this, uh, aquatic center? Right now the town of Wallingford has a YMCA, but they're, they're not only using that, they're renting out space at Sheehan High School. They're renting out space at Chogro's Mary Hall. And they just don't, they just don't have the space for it. They need an addition. And I'll tell you, they're lining up to this. And so I think Dan said about funding for it. Uh, Sean Bowden from the YMCA sent me an email and he said, can you come up with three and a half billion dollars so I can get this thing done? And I'm like, sure. So just a couple. Never was, I never was good at presentation. So. This may work out. Thanks, I appreciate that. Alright. What I did want to say, when, when we're talking, talking about a statement of needs. I was a swimmer for eighteen years, up to high school and at the college and everything else. So I know a little bit about swimming. Right? What, what places are doing now is they're building eight lane pools. Competitive pools. They're building three lane or, you know, two, three, four lane, uh, therapy pools. And they did the best. And they're building splash pad, okay? I don't know what the plans are to the Y. That's why I'm saying I'm assuming it's not going to be like this, right? But the advantages of this system here, okay, according to USA Swimming. A competitive pool should be between seventy-nine and eighty-one degrees. Anything more than that, your swimmers are going to get overheated and not going to get the practices. Okay, so that should be seventy-one, seventy-nine to eighty-one degrees. Your therapy pool, which I really look forward to, should be eighty-four to eighty-eight degrees. Right? Any less and you're not going to be using it because it's going to be too cold for the seniors, right? And splash pad here, which looks like one of those things you can right away eliminate is your biggest asset because that's where you're going to get most of your people coming in. Young kids, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not a splash pad. It's a no entry or zero entry, uh, pool. Okay, so you're not, it's a splash pad. Alright, so this pool, like I said, is twenty-five thousand, uh, square feet, right? Um, so my question was, is to the Y, you know, what are you looking to, are you looking, put into something like this? The Wallingford Y is, are you looking at something like this? Or are you looking into like a six lane pool? And what temperature would that pool, would you sustain that pool at? Would it be more towards the eighty degrees and more towards the seventy-nine degrees? Um. I think, and I'd have to ask this question to the council. I think the council and the board of finances come up with a figure, right, before and soon. You know, a dollar volume that we feel, everybody feels comfortable within this town, we'll put out the revenue. You know, whether, whatever, you know, the architect and the old, and the community center that they posed was thirty-five million or something like that, of seventy-four thousand square foot or seven thousand square foot. Uh, remember when I told you about the twenty-six thousand square foot senior center, community center part there? Rocky Hill just put in a community center with senior center, uh, two years ago. And guess what? Twenty-six thousand square feet, right? So in wrapping this whole thing up, I will say, uh, we, the old one was seventy thousand, the proposal was seventy thousand. The committee's been asked to download and downsize the statement of needs, alright? If we go from the seventy thousand to fifty thousand, which would be this combination, then we're still accomplish all that we were looking to do and have for thirty years. Thirty percent reduction in the statement of needs and we get a facility like that. Right? That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I take care of the sign up sheet. We're still in our, um, audience of citizens. Anybody else have any comments to get to?
I don't want to sound like, um, book these records, perhaps, but what I, I, I'm a finance guy, so I'm confused here. When there was a statement of need done years ago, you know, and I'm major myself, that's okay. Um, board of finance, the mayor, the, the mayor and executive, now we have a council. They get together and they decide what that statement of need is, what they want to fund on the state of the need. And they come up with a number. So if we're going to come up with a community center of thirty-five million, forty-five million, and then they send it to the public building commission, public building commission then hires an architect. And the architect has parameters that they have to assign a project wrong, whatever the council, the board of finance does. And then it goes to referendum. It just seems that, in my opinion, and I don't want to get anybody upset or insult, insult anybody. And I apologize if I do that. I just think this is just a total waste of time. We've studied this community center. Yeah, I was like thirty years old on the board of finance who were studying the community center. But we're still studying the community center and we're still talking about the pool, the indoor pool. We're still talking about this. And the only thing that's changed is that we got the Y in the mix and that's fantastic. I'm all for the Y, if they would satisfy the statement of need. But we've got to settle this. We can't just study this to death. That's what government. But we've got to settle this, we can't just study this to death, that's what government does, we constantly study things to death. And, and at the end of the day, five years from now, we're still talking about the community center. Three years ago, when I was running for mayor, the mayor stated that we are so close to the community center, well, we, we're still talking about the community. So, so what I'm asking the council to do is get together with the board of finance, come up with a number that each board that they feel comfortable with. And put it out to referendums, tell the, tell the architect, this is what we're going to do, have the architect scale down the statement of need and put it out to referendum, and we had an architect three years ago. You know, he may have disagreed with the price, but he wasn't given the parameter, he built, he designed the project according to that statement of need. Whatever the dollar amount, and everybody got all upset, all nervous about it, called it unaffordable, but no one gave that architect a financial guideline. So what I'm asking the council to do is set up a joint meeting with the board of finance, discuss what the town, what they feel the town could have thought. Put it up a bid and tell the town, this is what it's going to cost the town. And have the, have the, have the finance committee on the town, the, the finance department break it down. What it's going to cost us to, to take care of the pool, what it's going to cost us to take care of the town. And this is how much your taxes are going to go up for that specific reason. Other than that, I just think this is a waste of time, unless we put some financial parameters on the whole project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on any topic?
Yeah, I have.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jack Banks, I own power, I'm Jim in town. So, you know, our only concern after paying taxes for thirty years, you know, close to a million dollars in tax, you know. I would love to see a pool here and have the Y get involved, but what I've seen with the big YMCA is they put in a full-fledged fitness. And with, you know, employees, eat other fitness centers in town, it just, it is kind of like a competition. We just worry about having state-of-the-art place that competes directly with either of this. As far as pools, you know, that's a wonderful thing, but to go out to the fitness crowd. And have, I think the Y is a tax-free entity from the mayor. It just seems that it would be kind of difficult for the, you know, for us to continue to foil fifteen people a year. We have concerns.
Shake that, Jim. And as a member of your gym, or I don't know, it's nineteen eighty-two, whenever you were in, but it was in Berlin. We have that concern with local businesses as well, and that's all. Part of the discussion as well, you know, so we're mindful of competition and certainly don't want to harm, want to grow our own businesses. So that, that will be all part of the discussion in the final, you know, whatever we finally come down to. Any other comments or questions?
If I can just, no, there were a couple people that came up with chat. And we don't really recognize the chat, so if you're, when, when you're done with the people in the audience. Just as a reminder to the people on Zoom, if you'd like to speak when the mayor calls on the Zoom participants, then unmute yourself, you won't be recognized.
No, no, yeah, I usually go to Zoom. Look, yes, sir.
Um, so I'm actually not from this community. Probably wondered who's a stranger since probably had it. Uh, my name is Chris Dolan, I actually live in Minnesota. Two oh five Linda eleven in North Dupree, Minnesota. I'm here.
I may have one trip tonight to come here.
Love the town, by the way. Um, seriously, I mean that, and I'll say sorry. So I'm the VP of Engineering for Brightfeets. I've got about thirty years in industry, as an equipment manufacturer supplier. So I designed a favorite of the plant, I did not design the aspects of which was, we spoke tonight. I'm fully aware of noise and odor mitigation, I've dealt with that for literally thirty years in equipment plant design and all that. So we do take the, the comments very seriously, I hope that's been communicated to you thoroughly, that we do, we honestly do. We were first made aware of the noise issue in December of last year. So I reached out to a few different companies regarding a noise silencer for the stack. Because that, and the frequency that Ryan mentioned, two hundred ninety-two hertz, I, I knew exactly what you're talking about. Anyway, um, so we're well aware of it. Now, so, so you understand, a silencer of this sort is an out of the shuffle. This has to be designed and manufactured as per that, that specific installation. And so therefore, it's a process, a process we actually consider, but normally these things take four, five months minimum, six months more typically. Uh, we actually had the sound silencer placed on order by the end of the year. And the silencer was supposed to ship to us two weeks ago. It's up in Canada getting, well, it was up in Canada getting certified, it's going to go to manufacturing after manufacturing. I'm backing up, I reached out to a few companies to get, to start speaking to them about getting a sound sensor manufacturer for the facilities so we could deal with the noise issue. And I notified people, you know, with my communication, that this was going to take a little bit of time, just be aware of the fact that this won't happen overnight. And so we, we selected a company in Berlin, KGC, Kennedy Coast and Old Gold, new work. A, they're, they're close, which is, it has its benefits, B, they have the experience, they've done it before on a number of occasions, so they have the competency. And, you know, we just, I wanted to work with a local company if I could, and I've done a lot of different work with them over the last several months. They've become a really good partner, so to speak. So anyway, the silencer was supposed to ship two weeks ago. It didn't. Then it was supposed to ship last week, it didn't. And last week I was actually working from home, I worked from home part of the time, I'm here part of the time. So I rapidly designed something that I could, I sent it to Eddie at KGC and said, hey, can you build this thing like literally in a day? Like, we got to get something on that stack right here, right now, because we can't wait any longer for the sounds. So they literally had this thing built in a day, literally, and they got, they got crane up, we got it up. And yes, it's, it's, it's a partial mitigation just because the silencer hadn't showed up in what we expected. We knew it was where I met people, I've been up to his neighborhood, I hear, I know exactly what he's talking about. The silencer, we're told, is supposed to arrive literally any day, we expected it yesterday, then we expected today, then tomorrow. We've got a crane lined up to place it as soon as it arrives. So by the end of the week, I expect the sounds to be installed in place, and then it's, that, this can be evaluated once in place. As for specification, it'll bring us below threshold, and the testing and certification will demonstrate its efficacy in that regard. Until it's up on the stack and in place as function, words are words, right? On the odor side of it, we're cognizant of that as well. And, and odor isn't the highest subjective thing, as Ryan stated, the one first, you know, I grew up in a farm, I walk into dairy barn and like, it's best in all the world, right? Other people don't know, they're getting out of here. So we're going to deal with that as well, it's not as simple for reasons stated, because it is highly subjective, it's subject interpretation. And when you deal with odors, it's actually, you have to, you know, you have to manage it from the standpoint of it's a chemistry, there's a chemistry involved. Sound is simple, it's just changes oscillating, changes in pressure, right? Uh, odor is a lot more complicated, because you have different compounds produce different, you know. So, you know, I've spoken, we're, we're aiming towards carbon capture. Because we have to look at the site's permitting restrictions, like what can you tolerate or blow it out, have to back up stuff, you know. So you kind of get pigeonholed into a certain technology, which for our, in our case, is shown to be carbon capture. And carbon capture is effective, I mean, you've got oxidation, you've got scrubbing, there are different ways you can deal with it. Carbon capture is a neurotechnology that's really come along, uh, as of late. And so what it requires, harbors, an analysis of what it is you're trying to mitigate against, like is a hydrogen sulfide or something like that, is a predominant factor. Um, the situation that has exists relative to Brightfeets is such that we process material that comes in from various sources, rather consistent, but it's not always the same. We don't process soy, by the way, you should know. It's actually an emergency statement, our whole, the purpose of the plant is to offset consumable soy and corn and animal-based stuff. Because otherwise you're robbing computers, pay Paul, right? So we don't process silk. But anyhow, um, so I just thought, I wanted to just provide, you know, our perspective of the situation, we, we want to be good neighbors. And Ryan was right, Jonathan, the CEO of Brightfeets, correct person. I, I didn't leave a thirty-year-long job to join a company. For no, I mean, I did it because they're great people, they really, really are. And they have their hearts in the right place, and they want to make, do, do right. Obviously, he's got to work to, um, cost constraints, got to work it into budgets, right? Carbon capture system is one of the costs, you know, how are we working on our budget, how soon can we do it? You know, all those things are considerations that weigh upon him. I'm, I'm an engineer, it's easier for me. Here he goes, you need to do, he's got to figure out how to make it happen on the money side. But, but they did, I mean, the silencer was not cheap. You know, custom-made silencer, especially on a tight schedule, you pay extra money for that. We had to pay extra cost to get the thing done quicker. It's not cheap, you know, so. But, but the, the bottom line is, we, we do take it seriously, we definitely, definitely, definitely want to be a good neighbor. And Jonathan said, make people aware of that, and the reason I'm here, and he's not here, is because he had a prior engagement with another gentleman that I said, I'm more than happy to come and speak to half the company. But, um, he said, if anyone has any complaints, if you, an odor complaint, a noise complaint, call the number. He says, we'll do our best to do it as soon as we can, so we can go through it first. You know, they're trying, we're trying to do what we can to accommodate this as best we can. And, um, anyway, that's, kind of that will be there. I do think that a hundred percent of board noise rates, definitely. Get it done, I mean, yeah, you know, it's like, we're, now, the, the issues that people are talking about getting, having bad headaches and stuff. Those complaints came down last summer, people were complaining to our like, there's a, like a lumberyard or something over to the, to the Westland facility there, I forget the name of the company.
Oh, ABC, yeah.
Yeah, I'm forgetting, I'm sorry, I was actually there, but my memory's not. But anyway, they were complaining about the strong chemical smell, it's giving them headaches and all that. Well, there's nothing on our plant that, that it missed that type of odor. Where I think it was coming from is there's a, a fume hood on top of that contractor next to us that does like piping and all that. So they might have had some kind of, you know, chemical treatment, I don't know, but anyway, that particular odor was definitely not comfortable. Nothing, we have nothing on our plant that's characteristic of that odor. But I know the other we're speaking of, and again, it's a subjective thing. And I can appreciate when you want to wash your bedding and hang it out to dry, so you can put your head on the nice, you know, you know, blind dry stuff. It's, you know, like, you don't want to have that passive, so we're looking at that side of it too, and, um. Anyhow, so that's all.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, we know you're working with the town, you've been working with the town, and, and, you know, we'll, and you that work with you and get our residences comfortable.
So the number's on the website, brakes.com, and it's, it used to go to the cell of one of the VPs, but now it goes to some other line where somebody, you know, right on site can answer, you know, address.
Okay.
That's all.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience online where we have to?
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address? No.
Okay. All right, then we'll, uh, welcome our audience of citizens and, uh, onto the update, update, I think you've got a lot of updates tied already, but more, more, more coming, so enough updates here for me. But, so we're gonna, let's just, uh, go through our consent agenda real quick, and then we'll move on to, you know, business. And, and for some of the folks that are waiting, I think, from, and some of the folks from the Conservation Commission, I, I know you're probably all meeting now, I haven't been to that meeting, and you're here too. When we set the regular agenda, maybe we can just move that topic, I think, number one, we can hit that first. We can just hear a little bit of that, and we can hear some of our comments when we get to new business, which will be in a moment. So our consent agenda, we have, uh, one through, we have one through eight topics. Mostly donations to different parts of town, animal control. Charge to waves, some registration fees, football camps, uh, allowing Berlin Fire Department to tell, food beverages.
All your citizens finally are.
Approved Booster, Berlin, Booster's Club, approved in a nation of around a number of golf and carts from Hubbard Elementary Park to supper, and approved in a nation of around golf and four cart speeds as a raffle prize. Silent auction during the Berlin BMW family show, so those are the topics. We'll go ahead and take a motion to approve our consent agenda. Thank you, all in favor? Okay, onto our, um, new business, and so we're going to make a motion to, uh, consider topic number nine, uh, now, prior to topic number one. All right, thank you, second.
Second, Phil.
So, number nine.
So number nine is, uh, I understand number one.
Yes, all the, all town council, the Navy number one.
If the authorization of the manager, people to try to stay in line of the creation of a warehouse grant application, if you deal with Middletown, for the ancient mining pit, so keep area. And the authorization from the grant. You already did the match. Would you like, Mr. Armone, to give you a recap?
Just, yeah, real quick, Jim, if you could, just a recap, I know we talked about this a little bit, I know we perhaps made some changes in this, and, and new folks that were there, we, Don and I had to leave that meeting. Unfortunately, if there's something else you want to tell us, you can, you can tell us after Jim's presentation, but go ahead, Jim.
Okay, thank you. So the, you know, again, excuse me. We've discussed the grant, we applied last year, did not get it. The, um, there were some concerns last year about some of the aspects of the grant, particularly items in Middletown that, um, were near proper trails, near properties. Things that might encourage, you know, ATV use, things, things of that nature in that area. Um, so those elements were primarily dropped, what we're talking about this year is most of the, you know, most of the funding would be for repair of the cart paths, both on the Berlin side and then, and the Middletown side. Um, also some, uh, some improvements to the Metabasset Trail. Which is part of the New England National Scenic Trail, which is now a national park, as we've discussed. And, uh, you know, we have had some comments about, again, ATV use, for example. And if people have ideas of improvements that we can make to the trail that would discourage that use. Um, we'd certainly be receptive to including those in the package. Um, we also have an element in the package, which is to create a, like a walking path connection between Pistol Creek and the trailhead for the Metabasset Trail on Sprucebrook Road. And, uh, there's a, that's on the old Stan Tech right away. There are a couple parking spaces there, we'll make some improvements there to make it, you know, easier to park there. So, and then the other thing we're thinking about is, is really making some accessibility improvements at Pistol Creek. Thinking, you know, and we're working with Castle Booze on that now, still trying to, uh, define some of the some of the ideas, but as you know, we did a handicap accessible section of trail and a handicap parking space with our project a couple of years ago. So we want to do more things along that line with this, with this application. The, um, the other thing I would say is that, you know, we, we had sent, uh, sent you a map with uh, projected improvements, we've been reviewing the budget, we're gonna, we want to add some additional cart path repaving along Sprucebrook Road, which, um, you know, we can accommodate in the budget. So we'll be able to do, I think, more with, um, cart path repaving, not everything this time, but uh, do some additional sections. And I think, you know, most, the council members may know, but just to mention that, uh, we're also, you know, the, the public works is going to be doing improvements on, um, Sprucebrook Road this year and next year repaving, so that's going out in the area. And also that the, um, Army Corps, and you've got it on your agenda later, there's, uh, Army Corps has finally granted the permit for the Sprucebrook Bridge, so that project is, um, is back on the move, and, and again, is, is right i- in the same place. So things are going on in that area, but that's the general overview. We, uh, again, had some comments and concerns from the citizens about particularly, I think, the walking path along um, Sprucebrook Road. And, um, we've also brainstormed about other, you know, ways to make a safer walking path, whether that's necessary, et cetera, relocating. Those are things we can work on, um, you know, if you decide to go forward with that aspect of the project, we can work on that between now and certainly submission of the grant application. And, you know, further, you know, development of the final plans for the grant, so that's kind of the quick overview.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. Um, so it's been by Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Um, so it's been by, what is it? Where I see it here, March eleventh?
That's correct.
Yeah, and what, so we're talking two hundred fifty thousand plus the fifty from the town? Is that the total grant is three hundred thousand?
On the Berlin side.
On the Berlin side, right? And how much of that three hundred thousand would be to redo the cart pass at Pistol Creek, like? Two hundred thousand, two fifty?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's it's gonna be like, uh, figure. Two hundred thousand from the grant and fifty thousand from the town. It's a four, you know, twenty percent match. So two hundred fifty thousand dollar for the Berlin side. It's probably going to be, you know, yeah, about. Eighty to ninety, ninety percent probably we would spend on the cart path work.
And that's good. I mean, that's, I think that's a good thing. I don't think anybody has any issues with that. The parking though is another issue. So. He said in the other uh meeting, the parking at the street where they put the cement blocks. That is that, that's Berlin, right?
Yeah, that's not, there's no parking. The only, the parking in Berlin. Um, we're not adding any parking in Berlin as a result of this project. There's, there's a couple of parking spaces at the Stan Tech Road. Right away at Sprucebrook Road, which has been the trailhead for the Metabasset Trail for, you know, many, many years. And we're just proposing to make some some improvements there, make it a little easier to park there. Perhaps also, you know, add some buffer if the neighbor, you know, would like to, um, you know, the the house next door. But not adding any parking spaces in Berlin. Middletown is proposing to add some parking spaces on their side. Um, of, you know, on the east side of Atkins Street. Because right now, you know, they they own, you know, a large parcel there. Uh, with all the cart paths on their side and they don't have any parking. So um, that's part of their idea.
Definitely on their side of the street.
Jim, this is the first I'm hearing of the parking going over on that. And I know that, you know, it's it's certainly their land and they can do what they please. Is this as a result of us not moving forward with the parking on their side? Is it going to be adjacent to on Atkins Street there? Walk. So was that? Kind of is that a modification that's been made?
Yeah, they they're they're the plan from last year was they're going to be adding parking at a parcel that they owned. To the south of Pistol Creek. And they were going to make a trail connection from that parcel back to the Metabasset Trail. They've deleted that parking area. And that trail connection. And they like, but they like to add some spaces up at actually their Chris Pistol Creek property. And I, you know, that's again, there are details to be determined by them. That's conceptually, that's what they want to do.
See that on my map, that's why I'm curious. So Jim, is that the parking that you're talking Middletown adjacent to where those big cement blocks are right now?
Uh, it wouldn't be, you you know, that's our, that's our side of the street. The uh. I don't know. I I'm not sure exactly where they put it.
Maybe we could find out from middle.
Be curious to know. The other piece is Ms. Hanson uh is here in the audience. And I know she did speak previously in the conservation meeting. Sure, she wants to get up and reiterate. Which she spoke with about. Her farm. If you don't mind, I don't like the audience to hear your concerns because I have those same concerns.
Ms. Jill Hanson and I reside at four sixty-four Sprucebrook Road here in Berlin. So yes, I wrote something up because this is of great importance to the Hanson family. So my name is Jill Hanson and I've been a resident of Berlin for thirty-two years. I'm here representing the Hanson family that has owned and resided the same property for the past one hundred and thirty-seven years. Some of you might know us as the farm. In the thirty-two years I lived here, I've seen nothing but change and encroachment on our quiet little corner of town. We are grateful, very grateful. That the town purchased the former Pistol Creek property. We used to farm all that, frankly. So that was a big hit for us. When that got sold to the golf course. So we are very grateful. And with the intent of keeping the property open space, as the time goes on, we do feel. That what was once a farming community is seeming to become nothing but suburban sprawl. It seems that open space will always have something knocking at its door, trying to add or change it. My question to you is where or when does the line get drawn to truly just leave the open space alone, that open space? Our property of what's the former Pistol Creek Golf Course on two sides. After looking over the proposed improvements and additions, we are in favor and support improving the existing paved paths. And I thought on the map, it showed a fourteen space parking lot on the top of.
That on. It might be on the other side of, uh, it might be on the Middletown property we're thinking.
I'm not sure if the changes made to the maps that you were looking at.
We received in the mail.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's not on our side.
Okay, thank you. One of our homes is directly across from the proposed trailhead connector. We are not in favor, nor do we support this connector on Sprucebrook Road. And we have questions and concerns regarding it. Um, number one, why is this being proposed? Has there been a study conducted or requests from the community for such trail connection? Is it a necessity? Number two, what is this proposed path going up the road to the old Stan Tech Fire Road? Is it sidewalks? Is it? You know, a painted line in the road like they do for bike paths? What is it? And if so, we have concerns. Three, has the town taken into consideration the cost of keeping and managing the new parking area proposed? Now that I know it's on two space, that's smaller area, snow removal, teen hangout, garbage, litter removal. And does this affect our taxes? My concerns, the path coming out, which was made by people as a cut through, it never was. A true trail. This was people walking Pistol Creek. Oh, I don't want to go all the way up to the parking lot. Let me cut through here and have my mom pick me up or whatever. So we have cars pulled over there. Picking people up. Um. I believe it should be moved closer to the bridge. And be connected to the supposed seating area that will be overlooking the old Simeon North Pistol Factory. Right now, if you go and you look at it, it's coming straight out on an angle, right in front of my house. And there's supposed to be a proposed seating area, more looking overlooking the brook where the old Simeon North Pistol Factory resided. So. If you're gonna do it, maybe. It over there. If this path on the road is to be a sidewalk or not. And I propose the semi trucks need to stop. And the sidewalk or path or whatever it may be should remain on the same side of the road all the way up to the intersection of Somerset. Which is directly across from the Stan Tech Fire Road. So between my house, you have a bridge, then you have Somerset and it's right there to the Stan Tech. I believe this would be the best solution and route for crossing Sprucebrook Road. In closing, as a lifelong resident of Berlin, if this proposal was to go through. I would hope you would take into consideration the concerns and aspects I have mentioned. And be willing to work with the Hanson family and the surrounding neighbors of this area to come to an agreeable solution. So thank you for hearing me out.
And and yeah. Happy to hear all that and glad you came because that is the intention of the town, or at least the. Well, council here to work with you folks and see what we can, we can do to.
Good for it, make it a win-win.
Yeah, win-win for everybody.
I know the Dubeks were here, but they probably left. I don't see anymore of them still here. Okay.
Looking up.
And I know the gentleman that lives literally on the top of that two car.
Oh, yeah.
Parking lot that is literally just gravel now. And it really doesn't look like a parking lot. It actually looks like an extension to his driveway. Because his driveway is literally right there. Uh, they were not in favor of, you know, sprucing up. If you, if you will, that tube spot parking lot encourages, you know, uh additional people to. Park there, um, you know, in very, very close proximity to that. So I I would not be advocating for fixing that parking area.
No. You're gonna have more cars parked in there to stop paving. The other concern is speaking to some residents. Is the ATVs that are going in there and are running over people's property, running on, you know, some town property, but some uh private property there. I, I mean, I I didn't have a chance to talk to the police department before tonight, but. You know, we do have ATVs that we do enforce. Uh, the rules on our our property on on the the uh open space in Berlin. Specifically, a lot of it's been up on Reagan Mountain because a lot of people get lost up there. And it's easy to, people are falling off the cliff as well. So they do patrol up there and do the best they can. I don't know if you're, and it's speaking to some of the residents, I don't know if you see them on their ATVs. The police department go through there, uh, you know, they should be doing that if there's ATVs that are crossing people's property. So we could talk to them about that. We do have the ATVs that, you know, that they would use to patrol those properties. Um, and if there's any way to, there's, I know there's one in particular already looked at. Where the trail splits there after that trailhead towards where they want to add the parking, um. It does, that's where the ATV that gets cut across.
Yeah.
Some private land there. The other trail goes up to limitation there, but but the ATVs then start cutting across. I think since they're in these property, maybe that's what it is there. So, I mean, we don't want anyone to get hurt. We don't want to put. Fences and God forbid somebody runs into it and gets hurt, but we should not. We don't want to make it easier for ATVs to drive through on people's private property because of the trail system we. Created, but so there are some issues.
That, uh, you know, that is being proposed here literally would be right across your farm lawn. Stones or dust or gravel or whatever.
Yeah, that's another issue. So. Sprucebrook is supposed to be paved, I guess, next year from what, a year? Sure, possibly this year. Possibly this year, Sprucebrook. So when you pave it. It it'll probably end up being a little bit wider, I would imagine, right? Uh, yeah, sure. I'm just trying to think of a solution for uh.
You know, I think that that would make her happy.
You would move across the street, right?
I was proposing that if the word going to.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to be on the mic. We're gonna get her, we're gonna get yelled at.
We're in trouble. You can come up, you can come up. Mike doesn't bite. Mike doesn't bite.
I'll be on hold.
He's pretty gentle. I began Frankie, he's her.
I was proposing that if. This was to go through.
Yeah.
When they come out the path at the end, you know, in the corner, which was across from my house.
Yeah.
To not be crossing right in front of my house. To stay on the same side of the road. As where the pet city is already. And. Possibly putting the path towards the birthmark. You're, if I open my garage door, there's the path. I'm sure you can kind of see on the map. I mean, I don't even support the connection. I'm I'm not for it. But if it was to happen, if it could be thought through. And also safety. People are speeding on that road. We have semi trucks going down that road. It's it's a tricky road because it's like you're on a hill, but then in some parts of it, you're in a little gully valley. So, you know, I can tell you from. The driveway of the farmhouse, you need to be more, um, you know, a watch out from one way because you're not going to see him. But then down at the other house, four sixty-four is the complete opposite now. Now you gotta be more particular. The other way. So the terrain. No. So if you go to the end of Sprucebrook where it meets Main Street.
Yeah.
Where if you were to take a left to go towards East Berlin.
Right.
There is a sign there that says no truck. But if you get to the intersection where Sprucebrook meets Savage Hill in Atkins. There's a sign for Savage Hill, no trucks. But what they're doing, they're coming from the other way. Up over the hill. So they're cutting through, you get the FedEx trucks, you get all these trucks. And they're cutting through to get to the Berlin Turnpike. That's what they're doing. Correct. Correct. Or or going the other way.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Um, I found out about this whole trail thing recently. So I've been talking to Jim Mahoney and Maureen. And what we can do is put at least by striping the pavement, maybe a passageway for pedestrians. We have enough width, but not a sidewalk, no stone dust on the bridge. We want people to plow it.
Yeah.
So as far as the bridge goes, I think we can accommodate people on either side. Have to talk to the engineering team about that.
Yeah.
The other thing that we'll be talking about is it's going to be like an interpretive center for the Simeon North, like historic aspect. It's going to be a trail that come off the Pistol Creek Trail right to the bridge. You could connect maybe the paved path and then go on. I think what Carol's talking about is you can then go north. And go connect to the trail we're going to have as part of the bridge project and you'll go right to Pistol Creek.
Right.
I don't know about the rest of the trail system. This is kind of like.
Yeah.
Um, this grant application, I've just been educated on it.
Yeah.
So I found out now the bridge is part of this sort of, you know.
Yeah.
Connection uh sort of question, so.
Not to take up too much more time on this. Jim, what was the deadline that you had on this grant proposal to submission? Was it the end of March? I'm sorry.
No, it's March eleventh. So, you know, we basically were looking for authorization to apply tonight and, you know, we could. Get it at the next meeting, but again, if the council, if we're talking about fine tuning the grant application, I think that's fine and getting more feedback. You know, if there was consideration to not apply, obviously, we're, we've got to be, we're working on the grant now. So if the decision was, we don't want to go for this, then tell us now.
No, no, I'll talk to you guys.
No, I think that what I let personally and then of course the council, we can certainly vote on it if we have to. I think what we need to do is make these adjustments that we've talked about. Down in the Conservation Commission meeting this evening with some of the people here. And, um, you know, vote on this. Forward. I don't know, Mayo, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think what we heard tonight, I mean, you heard about conservation, uh, more than we did, uh, for a short time there, but. Same thing. Could could we tweak some of this as to what? Because that's what I was thinking. They're going to pave roads, which I didn't realize there was pavement. That we can make a little striped area, which would make it a little bit more conducive. I I would, I tried to wouldn't want to be walking on.
The bridge will be, um, if things go according to plan, the bridge would actually follow next year.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna pave up the approach. We wouldn't have time to find to whatever.
But I mean, to get the parking lots that are still on this document, I'd like to get this modified and be as accurate and as as possible.
So still work on it, Jim, and we have, I guess, we have a meeting right before the eleventh. Most of it together, right? I mean, we're not saying that. Obviously, but but could we get the final plan before we say yes?
Yeah, I know. I think, you know, again, what I'm hearing is the the walking path along Sprucebrook and the two parking spaces next to. Uh, at the trailhead are the issues primarily, right?
Sure, right. Yes, I believe that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of folks over there. And walking over there a couple of weekends ago, I could see it. Kind of saw the whole area there, so I understand that.
Yes, Jim, you uh onboarded all the changes, so you. We needed all the changes that are, that have. I believe that all the changes that, that have any questions.
Jim.
Is that to me? So, yeah, I mean, I think. I think we can make it work. I mean, I think the thing is, you know. We've talked, I think that we're trying to. Make a connection between Pistol Creek and, and the, and the trail. And I think that's gonna help us get the grant because I think the state, and this is more of a, you know. Bigger multi-use trails around the state. This, you know, this through trail. Is a big plus for us in the grant application. And I think that we've got the parking there. So, you know, if we can figure out whether it's. Striping on the road or whatever to make, uh, make it a little bit safer for people to get from Pistol Creek where we have parking to the trailhead. Anybody that lives in that area that likes to walk up Pistol Creek every day, they can get over there safer. And, you know, as far as the, the two spaces at the, uh. At, at Stantec, I don't think that's a make or break. You know, again, they're there now. People could use them now. Uh, so, yeah.
I appreciate that, Jim, and.
Thank you, Jim. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
You know, they can go back and, but really a lot of it's done. So minor adjustments to, to the map and, and.
I agree.
Do you have any questions? Certainly Mark, I'm sure can help you or I can be more than happy to.
No, yeah, okay. So, so bring it back on the march.
With the.
Fifth.
Okay.
And, uh. I think what the change is, we, we potentially. Anything else, folks? Say anything?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all very much. Um, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, folks. Okay, we have a lot more to do. You guys don't get the overtime. We have. We'll get there. We'll try and move as quickly as we can. I'll back to number one.
Yes. Yeah, it's the early morning. And at one polling place. Okay, you're gonna take this one.
And the registers are here also, but mainly what it is, is that, um, it has been decided and we're all in agreement. That the, uh, polling page for early voting would be town hall. To do stuff for everybody. Come to town hall, registers are here, and also the fact they have to have what's called CBS system. Available to make sure that people can be either registered to vote or to, uh, vote their, their ballot. Because we are now considered a mid-sized town where we're over twenty thousand, there's a possibility that, um. What is being asked is that we come in front of the legislative body and make sure that you are also on board with having one poll in place. All right, um. We don't know how it really is gonna go this year. We're, we're. We're gonna see what happens for early voting, but also please remember that if we go to a second polling place, not only does the register have to, um. Cast that, but also we have to have the software systems available. So we're asking that you just kind of let this plan and say that it sounds good that we do the one poll in place, have it at town hall. And the registrars will be able to, um, they're, they're very well organized. They're getting their people lined up. They have things. They're eager to see how it all goes and, um.
Aren't we all?
And of course, they'll have support from the town.
Oh, we know that, Kate. We know that.
Are you gonna have anything else on that?
Any else, Jeff?
Cover it.
You're good?
Yeah.
We're good with it? Registersers, you're good with it?
Oh, yeah.
So far, so far. So far, let's see how it all goes.
Keep our fingers out.
Keep our fingers crossed. Okay. Uh, question to the council, folks? Okay, so discussion. And discussion, what do you, do you need a vote?
No, I think that as long as you're okay with the one, one place that will just give it under.
Well, good. Folks.
I'm gonna take a vote.
Take a vote. Let's take a vote. So we'll just have a motion to, uh. Conduct the early voting elections twenty twenty-four at Burlington. Just probably that first line, uh. Just.
Move to conduct early voting in one polling place at the town hall. Twenty-four presidential.
Thank you. Uh, second on that.
Second vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. All right, so move. Thank you. Okay. John.
Tonight, number two, it's the chairman.
Yeah, it's from the, from Tony. Yes. Yes, sir.
Mr. Charles.
Mister Charles, how are you?
All right.
Yeah. We know those seats are very comfortable out there. I understand how to, it's kind of worse than church, I think.
Mister Mayor, council members, Rose, Kate. My name is Charles Calvissi and I am the chairman of the Cemetery Commission. Uh, to speed up some time, if you look up on the big screen, screen, my assistant here is going to show you some before and after pictures. As I, uh, kind of go along on what we've been doing. Uh, and we're here tonight to show you what we're doing with the money that you budgeted. So years ago, the state mandated that all abandoned cemeteries had to be maintained by the town. So the town of Berlin has seven abandoned cemeteries and they are as follows. The Ledge Cemetery, which I already have in place. The Christian Lane Cemetery, which you're seeing the picture of right there. Uh, is next to the crematorium. The Beckley Cemetery, which is behind Home Depot on the way to, uh, Rocky Hill on the left-hand side. The Spruce Brook Cemetery, which is next to Ed Haber's old house. There's, uh, one veteran and two other people buried in there. The Dennison Cemetery, which is also known as the Bridge Cemetery, which is at the intersection of Farmington Avenue and Mill Street. The Dunham Cemetery, which is over here on Norton Road. And in case you didn't know, we have a Potter's Field in the back. There's like fifteen people buried back there. And then the Hall Cemetery, which is on the corner of Pool Gate Road and the Berlin Turnpike. At this time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission, um, for the defense and our vice chairman couldn't be here, but Risa Brown, raise your hand. She's our historian. And, uh, Stephen Passdusik's not here and Andre Malari. And, uh, they, they, they be, uh, they are part of us, our committee. And, uh, none of this could have been done without Steve Wood, Superintendent of Public Grounds. He invited us on what contractors to use, how to get our, our, our purchase orders and, and lines everything up for us. So we, we thank him very much. And I'd be relentless if I didn't mention our town clerk, Kate Wall, who tried to keep us on the street now.
It's impossible.
He does that to all of us. And I got these here.
So when this commission came together about three years ago, the first thing we did is we took a field trip. And we went to all these locations. And the first thing that we decided is we had to concentrate on the trimming. The, over the years, it had been neglected and you had a big canopy over and this allowed all the tombstones to get mold and mild. So we, we focused on the first year and a half and spent all of our money on opening up the canopies on all these cemeteries, doing the trimming and stuff like that. Uh. Then we said, let's replace all the old damaged fence. And if you look right there, you can see. You come back up, there you go. They were all nasty acre fences. That's the, uh, Dennison Cemetery there. So we went and replaced them all. Uh, and that was accomplished by the, uh, end of, uh, twenty twenty-three. We also put the signs up. Steve had those signs made for us, so they're all identified. People, people know what they're looking at when they drive by. The Dunham Cemetery, we fixed the stone wall there. Now, I might add on the Dunham Cemetery. When Mister Dunham, the last Dunhams died, they left us fifteen thousand dollars to be used at that cemetery. So whatever work we do there, we spend that money first. And so far, we probably have about ten thousand dollars left. We'll replace the stone wall in the front and we put up the nice new fencing. And whatever, when we get in there to start fixing the gravestones and then trimming or anything, we use that money first. So that helps us out and helps, helps the town out too. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, Steve hired a new contractor. And he comes in and he does the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup and then the mowing and the trimming. And the commission is very happy with this new contractor. They take a lot of pride in their work. They, they, uh, show a lot of respect around the gravestones and everything. So we're very happy with that. With these tags completed, our next objective was to start damage, uh, fixing damaged gravestones. And we were lucky to have an Eagle Scout last summer, two summers ago, and he started over at Ledge Cemetery. And he was able to do a few and then he went off to college. So Risa was able to find a contract that here in the state of Connecticut. And that's all they specialize in is repairing, straining gravestones, cleaning them and all that. So we started at Ledge and we finished that. And we have gone to Dennison next over on Farmington Avenue and Risa and I met with him. And as soon as the weather breaks, we're going to do twenty, about twenty stones over there that will be fixed, straightened out and all that. Then from there, we're gonna go to Christian Lane, then from there, we're gonna go to Beckley. And then over to Dunham Cemetery. So. We can only do so much a year. The weather i- is a big factor. Plus, this gentleman is very busy. So he gives us a few weeks of the year because he's got all these other commitments. So it'll take us a little while, but we'll get them all done. Jim Mahoney has been very successful in getting us a five thousand dollar grant every year. So we spend that first also. Uh, so, so that helps us out too to keep our budget down. So right now, I'd just like to thank the council, uh, for funding us and, uh, complete these projects and we'll continue to do the best we can. Any questions?
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you for the work. You really, when you drive by these cemeteries, they definitely look like you've been giving them some tender loving care, so.
I was gonna say, someone not, who didn't grow up here and from I moved here ten, twelve years ago, whatever it's been now. And seeing what it was and, you know, the hand painted signs and everything to what it looks like now, it's just an incredible change and it really is, I think. Doing respects to those cemeteries.
Well, if you ever get a chance to walk some of these cemeteries and you start looking at the names and you see stage and you see print, oh, there's a park lane back.
Great.
And if you go and some of those, people from the Indian War. So there's a lot of history in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, members of the commission.
All along, uh, it's an item number three, the poll taken.
Well, to start, uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here and, uh, speak about the YMCA that I'm. Obviously passionate about. My name is John Benetti. I'm CEO of the Meriden and Berlin YMCA. Um, well with, thank you. I'm here with Steve McCoy. He's our chief operating officer. Right now, he's a IT guru. Oh, boy, right? And, uh, Don Ripman, who sits on our board of directors and also is from the, uh, boroughs inside here. So hopefully Steve can get this, uh, presentation going. He says he's closed. Because I think it will let it, let it go. I think some of your questions will be answered tonight. I can't tell you that all of them are gonna be answered tonight. And really, the, the, the crux of what I want to get across is what the why. Could bring for. And it's still gonna bring because there's a lot of, a lot of ifs in here, right? A lot of what ifs.
Sure.
But things that we certainly would like to see and what are we currently doing in New Britain and Meriden? That we could see also apply, applicable here in Berlin. Um, we serve three communities. Meriden, New Britain and Berlin. And I, and I really think we, over the last. Five, six years, we're gonna do more in Berlin, but I think there's still more to be done. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve. And I'll come back into some of the tough questions. Oh, and, uh, but I want Steve to give you an overview about the why and then, uh, we'll go from there. He's up the slide, so.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you everyone for, uh, being here and, um, allowing us to speak. Uh, my name is Steve Markoy. I'm the CEO of the, uh, Meriden and Berlin YMCA. Uh, some, just some basic facts I tried to put together for everybody here is, uh, the why, we, not profit, committed to strengthening community by connecting all people that are potential purposes in each other. The why is made of people of all ages, all walks of life, working side by side to strengthen the communities. And, uh, this one, that's one of the multiple, uh, from the national YMCA is just, they basically, uh, just saying that we're a YMCA friendly. Um, and our core values, my values are caring, honesty, respect, responsibility. And they guide everything that we do. The, uh. The, uh, the Meriden YMCA, uh, Meriden and Berlin YMCA serves our communities. So the why nurtures the potential of children, for healthy living and foster a sense of social responsibility. The Meriden YMCA has served our community for a hundred and fifty-six years and the Berlin YMCA has served, um, our community for a hundred and sixty-six years. And our community mission continued even when our why was closed in twenty twenty. Our why provided free childcare to essential workers, virtual programs, outreach to senior members and food to families more. In, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, the Meriden and Berlin YMCA kept over eleven thousand members healthy, active and engaged. Welcomed over one hundred and ninety-two thousand visits across the association. Those are people coming in daily to, uh, you know, cloud. Scan their cards and, uh, write some sort of services. It doesn't include the many people, um, that do walk through our doors or other events and such along those lines. Um, we employed over, oh, we employed nine hundred and twenty-eight staff, provided childcare for one thousand six hundred and twenty-five children. Um. Each one of those children, uh, also was fed meals daily as well as though breakfast, lunch, afternoon snacks of, uh, of some sort. Provided one thousand seventy-five children were fun summer camp experience at Mount Amist, which is Meriden and Camp Thunder Moon here in Berlin. Uh, provided, uh, we have about a hundred and seventy-five campers here at, uh, our Camp Thunder Moon at McGee Middle School.
Just wanted to touch on the staff really quick. I think it's a important part of community and sense of community. So, uh. First of all, I come from a family, I don't look like it, but a family swimmer. My daughters, both my daughters swim as, as a third of the pool now. I was, I spent the weekend down at, uh, University of Meriden. What a great pool they have there. They don't even have a swim team, but what a great pool. Uh, so anyways, I, I, I bring that up because my kids are, are, there's nothing's more near and dear to my heart than my children. And with that said. Um. Their first job. Was at the YMCA. So the first job of the Berlin high school students, the residents, if we're already employing some of their childcare centers and such. Could be that the YMCA, right? Lifeguards and, uh, fitness attendants and, and. Uh, camp staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that is not a, that's not a small number of employees. I mean, nine hundred and twenty-eight. Employees from our association, pretty large. I also want to step back to say that we're the third largest YMCA in the state. We have an annual operating budget of about twenty million dollars. We operate as a nonprofit. Money in, money out. That's what, how we operate and, uh, we're, we're a healthy why, successful why. What calls this so the wealthiest why, but by design, we're not supposed to be wealthy. We're, we're, we're a nonprofit organization, so. With that said, I'll turn it back over to Steve for some more.
Um, so, you know, we, uh, like John was saying about our YMCA, we turn nobody away for the inability to pay. We do ask people to demonstrate their deeds, but no one is turned away for the inability to pay. And, uh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three, we provided over one point seven million dollars in scholarships for member, memberships and programs for families and children. That's a little bit. And so some of those scholarships and memberships for children were predicated on partial scholarship. So that number is, is, is not just full scholarship. We don't believe in necessarily. A, a full scholarship or anything. We, unless, unless they can demonstrate that need, that that's really what they, what they, what they need to have. So what we do is. We want to be good stewards. We raise money throughout the whole year, right? And we want to make sure we're good stewards of the money that we raise. Mister Ripman has donated thousands of dollars to the YMCA. And he wants to make sure that I'm vetting out those individuals that are getting scholarships, making sure that they really need this scholarship. And things like that. So we do a great job of, of making sure that those that actually receive the financial assistance. Truly are in need of the financial assistance. And I think that's important as we, as we attempt to raise money to potentially build a YMCA. I think that's an important aspect because. We want to be good stewards of that money that we raise. And the last one on the slide here is, um, our why has provided over one thousand holiday meals to our Meriden neighbors and holiday meals to our New Britain, our house residents. Uh, some Thanksgiving, Christmas, um, you know, we actually, in Thanksgiving, we, we. Get about eighty-five to a hundred turkeys. We cook them up, we carve them up and we serve them and, uh, then we transport meals across the community. And, um, at Christmas time, uh, we'll get toys donated as well as doing the meals as well, making sure that we get, uh, anyone in need, uh. Uh, some sort of warm meal on that day. So currently in Meriden, um, and, and the Meriden and Berlin YMCA serves the Berlin community. We have, uh, two childcare locations here at. Little Spartans at, uh, McGee and a little Huskies at Hubbard School. Um, we also provide, uh, before and after school programs at all three elementary schools. Um, we have. Um, we also provide, uh, before and after school programs at all three elementary schools. Um, we have our Camp Thunder Moon at McGee Middle School. We collaborate with the Park Direct Department for the Tinsel Fun Run. Uh, we, uh, Ski Club for grades three through twelve. And, um, obviously we've already touched upon that the both, uh, boys and girls, uh, swim team from Berlin High School practice at the, at the YMCA. So how we serve our active older adult members, um, we have Fit Senior Yoga, Silver Sneakers, Zumba Gold, Aqua Aerobics, Tai Chi, Pickleball, which is, we know is, is growing. Uh, Senior Fit, Stretching, Brain Gyms, um, Cardiac Rehab, Blood Pressure Programs, Diabetes Prevention, Healthy Cooking Classes. We do Lunch and Learns. We have a, a group of wise men that meet, um, every Tuesday. Uh. We have, we use our space, every space at the YMCA is a working space. So we have, um, you know, areas that, uh, our seniors play mahjong. Um, we have a group called Pool Pals. We do, uh, we have State and Silver Sneakers, Silver and Fit. We do active programs that cover the cost of membership. We currently have two thousand two hundred and forty-eight members enrolled and that's, uh. And, uh, we estimate sixty-eight percent of Berlin's seniors would be eligible for these programs as well. Uh, and we offer, um, membership discount for veterans as well.
I think the important part of that is, is approximately. And you could, you, some might know better to be, but approximately about five thousand seniors in the town of Berlin.
There are over seven thousand.
Okay, seven thousand according to last census. Uh, twenty, twenty-two thousand. Sixty-eight percent of them would be eligible for free Silver Sneakers memberships to the Y. Roughly sixty-eight percent. I don't wanna, you know, so I could confidently tell you, it's over fifty percent would be eligible for, uh, those, like, have a Silver Sneaker membership to the Y. And that would be free at cost. If you get paid every visit they come, so you don't get paid unless they actually come to the Y and use it. Which encourages us to set up programs and services that they would use. So.
I know it'd be very, um.
Yeah, it's all different membership groups, uh, I, yeah, so, uh, a single adult membership is forty-five dollars in that range. Uh, an adult, a family membership's eighty-nine dollars.
Is that annual?
Yeah, no, that's monthly. Yeah, monthly.
So I have an idea.
Yeah. Now, we also, I also think it's important to know with membership debt, we want members that wanna be members. They can cancel that at any time. We're not these, you know, you're in a contract for a year. We're, we're, we're a community organization. This is what we do. We wanna be part of the community. We want to be fair to the community. Uh, I mean, Steve said it in our mission statement, you know, caring, honesty, responsibility, respect. We live by that. You know, that's, that's, that's our motto. That's who we wanna be. We want members that wanna be members. So you can cancel that anytime. And, uh, but we do a monthly, our monthly is the same as you painted upfront. We don't try to trick you into any special type deals or anything like that. So. And then on our website, this lists is all of our, our membership, uh, pricing curve.
Thank you.
Let's see if they put this still here maybe. So this video is, is obviously to show you a little bit of the Meriden Y, which is a thirty-three in my mug here. So let's Steve back that up a little bit. Here we go. Let's play on. I don't know what's playing. Sorry about the idea.
Let me just interject something here. I just wanted to interject something. Interject something here. The gentleman here from Powerhouse was concerned about the Y coming in and, and putting him out of this and laying off employees. We're not, we're not competing with the Powerhouse. We're not competing with any of the local gyms. Our facility is not that great. They're, you know, they're not gonna. I'm just saying, I don't mean to rock it, but I'm just saying, you know, we're not here to build for bodybuilders. We're not here for that kind of stuff. So at ease, we're not looking to do that. Our thing is families and children, and that's kind of our goal. We're not looking to take your, you know, the guy who wanna bench three hundred pounds or any of that kind of stuff. It's more families, you know, they bring their kids in to work out, that kind of.
That's our main business, though, family.
So, um, this is a layout of the, uh, Meriden Y. Obviously, from the outside, you're looking at it there. Depending where it goes, depending where, by the land, I mean, it could be a one-story building. It could be a two-story building. The Meriden Y is two stories. It's approximately thirty, uh, thirty thousand square feet. Two of the things that are currently in here are these racquetball courts. I would, I would recommend not having racquetball courts to tell you the truth. So that's making up. That's either that space could be either repurposed, reused in there or eliminated completely depending on it. You're a hundred percent right. I don't know if the YMCA fits every need that is out there in your laundry list of needs in your community report. But I can tell you this, that there will, that, that will be some, and we're gonna do an outstanding job programming this and serving the community. That I can assure you. Can't tell you in every need. I, I really can't, but I can tell you that what we do, we're gonna do well and we're gonna take pride in doing it. And I think it's time for the Berlin community to have a YMCA, quite frankly, that can serve the community. So. That's, this is our facility. I will touch a little bit on the pool and I gotta touch on all of our facilities within there. So your pool's here. It is. Mr. Thurston, it is your six-lane pool. It is at eighty-three degrees. You know why it's at eighty-three degrees? Cause it needs to be multipurpose. You know why it needs to be multipurpose? Because it serves a lot of different groups and a lot of different people. Why does it have to do that? Because you can't just, can't afford just a pool for one group anymore. It's just not feasible. It's not po- possible. Now, there are limitations with this pool and I'm aware of those that we would have to look into. Seating, stands, right? A deep end where you can do diving, swimming and diving teams go hand in hand. Uh, so there are some limitations of what we have in Meriden that would need to approve. Is it gonna be multi-pools? We could do whatever we, we can imagine, whatever we want. What can we afford? What can we do? Remains to be seen. But I would say that the YMCA is not a YMCA and this community has waited a long time. It needs a bare minimum of a six-lane pool that's competition. And, and I, and I also, with that said, it also needs to be multipurpose space that can be or multi-use. It needs to be able to cater to the seniors. It needs to be able to cater to youth swim lessons. It needs to be, and it got, it's gotta transform quickly. From, from swim lessons to swim team and everything in between. Locker rooms are locker rooms are gonna be for, you know, for any activity that's going. Those are more in the middle area here. This room up here looked like an octagon as you can see here. It's a meeting multipurpose space. It's before you even get into the Y. And the beauty of that room is that you can do a bunch of things. You can have little league registration there. You could have something, someone talked about voting. I don't know. Maybe it's a voting place or somewhere where you could have, hold, hold a meeting outside of City Hall. But again, it doesn't have one use. It has a multiple of uses to maximize the space. Um, gymnasiums, gymnasium, something that's. I don't, I can't believe it, but the mayor loves the track above it for, so there is an indoor track. The mayor loves it.
So there is a track, so.
It is a nice thing. We feel like a hamster a little bit, but it, cause it only goes around your gym. It's a, it's a high school side gym. So there's bigger gyms. New Britain Y has a bigger gym than this than Meriden, but it's a high school sized gym nevertheless. And then, um, upstairs, this is the section right here, which is about half of the gym that is fitness. Free weights, fitness, machines, things like that. It's a small portion of the overall Y that is. Fitness, but it is part of what the Y does. Classes, aerobics studios, same multipurpose use. Aerobics is Zumba, chair aerobics in the morning, Zumba at night. And on Saturday mornings, children's days. Everything changes, evolves so that we can maximize those spaces again. This is a multipurpose room. And the rest are really mechanicals and such, and some business offices. This is what we call, they call it on this, uh, nursery. Uh, we currently have a preschool there in Meriden. Uh, but I do think in this community, uh, it, probably half the size of that would be used for, uh, child watch. Child watch is while you're working out, you put your children there, it's included in your membership, uh, and such like that. So with that said, I don't know if there's supposed to be interaction. I, I, I didn't get the, the. If there isn't, then I, I'm fine. I'm pretty much done. But if there, if there's any questions for the council to ask, and then if you guys want more interactions, it's up to you.
Well, you know, well, this makes it count. Other than anything, I mean, the purpose of that was really just to get the, uh, you know, basic information out there. Um, we're, we're gonna have. As I mentioned earlier, we're gonna have many more bites of the apples. No one's made any, some decisions and there's nothing determined with anything how we move forward. That's why we're waiting on the study that's due in May. Or, you know, we had your presentation. Obviously, we'll go back and revisit the, uh, the committee that was put together, look at the, the original, uh. So we have a lot more time for comments and questions and, uh, just to get some basic information, but go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
Question. Is there any way that we can get copies of those floor plans sent to us?
I spoke to Kate earlier. Kate's already on it. I, I, yeah, Kate is on it. So. We, we were setting up earlier and Kate was helping us set up and she immediately said.
They're gonna ask.
Yeah, they're gonna.
Any questions to the council or?
Uh, any questions, folks? Any?
Just a quick, you know, question. Something hit me. Um, you were talking about, uh, where the pool is and the locker room. Question I have, is it separate locker rooms for the pool area versus the rest of the facility or are they shared? And the only reason I'm asking is if you have adults working out in the gym and you have a high school girl's swim teammate, they might, so I'm just.
So there's, there's, yeah, no, there's women's locker room. Big on locker rooms at the YMCA. Women's locker room, girls' locker room, men's locker room, boys' locker room and then family locker. Your family lockers are kind of like your private all-in-one stall area, shower, toilet, sink, et cetera. Um, and then there are regular bathrooms. That at one time were male and the truth is, you know, male, now we just turned them into Utes. So there's also regular toilet on the second floor and.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Do you do anything with a couple of these pools?
We, we use our pools as therapy pools, yes. There is aqua aerobics in there. There is, but we do not have a therapist that is on staff that does anything with, with therapy in there. And there, this pool's at eighty, eighty-three degrees. And I think if we heard from Mr. Thurston, it was like ideal for swimming's under. Probably seventy-nine, eighty and therapies eighty-five. It. It's a large body of water and we try to keep it at eighty-three to do the best for all parties. Now, our New Britain pool, we, where we don't have swimming, right? We don't have competitive swimming. That's like.
Eight, seven, eight.
Eight, seven, eighty-eight.
Hospital for Special Care is ninety-two to ninety-four for therapy.
Yep.
Um, but they're not doing Zumba particularly. They are actually doing therapy.
Yes.
Now, I can go in that pool up there and create my therapy and then once it's created.
Yep.
Um, that therapist doesn't have to stay with me. I just go in and do it. I go up, I check in and I do it.
I would encourage you to, to try the, yeah, have you tried the New Britain Y pool?
I used to swim at the New Britain Y.
I would give it, you know, if you ever want an opportunity, let us know and we'll see if it could fit your needs. Now, I'm not saying it's for everyone. I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. I mean, but again, we have, you know, this is just something to digest for us. We, we appreciate, uh, for you guys coming and, uh.
The end of it.
Oh, oh, Barbara, of course.
Yeah, Barbara, go easy.
Yeah, I did wanna know about senior programs and how you conduct senior structure.
So we.
Do you at least repeat question for the, has there been people who's here?
Oh, okay. So I think the question is senior programming and how we conduct the senior program.
Yeah, how you arrange that stuff.
So I'm gonna answer how we, how we arrange senior program, how we conduct them. And, uh, I think in the slides that Steve presented to, to us. There was a. A post-senior program. So, uh, let me read the list, right? And then, uh, Fit Senior Yoga. So that's yoga specifically designed for seniors. And it would be conducted during primarily day, daytime hours. Uh, Silver Sneakers is just your general aerobics type classes. Some are, some are even conducted in chairs. Uh, Zumba Gold is specifically designed for, for, uh, seniors and it's Zumba, but designed for senior. Uh, Aqua Aerobics, same type of thing, designed for seniors, uh, daytime hours, Tai Chi. Pickleball, um, we'll do pickleball for all ages, but there'll be opportunities for it to be designed just, you know. This is set for seniors, these hours. Um, Senior Fit is more, uh, weights, training. Uh, stretching and stretching, uh, that type of thing. And then, uh, Brain Games are more interactive games that we play with seniors, uh, almost like a. Uh, minute to win it type games, et cetera, things like that. Um, Lunch and Learns are, uh. Are we bringing like hospital groups? So let's talk about arthritis. Let's talk about different topics that are affecting seniors. Um, generally speaking, it includes lunch. Our facility does not have a kitchen. This does not have a kitchen. Uh, and I wouldn't propose a kitchen. In a Y, uh, we do have one up in New Britain. We can bring in outside food there and we certainly do. And then, uh, Cardiac Rehab, that's a national Y, uh, program that we, uh, and blood pressure, uh. Program too, through the national Y, diabetes dungeons also through to the national Y. And we do have an off-site kitchen that we do to offer some healthy cooking classes, but it's off-site.
A lot of activity programs the seniors wanna participate. What about rooms designated for like knitting, sewing, uh?
There wouldn't be any, I, I, I wouldn't envision any one room dedicated to that one thing. But I would, if, if, if seniors wanted a knitting club, we'd set up the, uh, allow you to knit in a room from the hours of X to X so that we can have a knitting club. Absolutely. I mean, uh, we, like our wise men group, I'll give you a friend. It's our wise men group, about seventy gentlemen. Don't ask why it's gentlemen. It's just always been. And they give presentations where they'll go on a trip to Africa and they'll talk about their safari and how, what they saw and took pictures. It's Tuesday mornings. And that was, that was membership driven. If you don't make people that tended to Y said, this is what we wanna do. I wanna. Get a group of seniors together and talk about these type of things. And that's how it kinda happened. That's the, that's the community of the Y that happens. The magic of the Y is not the building. The magic of the Y is the people that, that, they come together. That's the magic. It's, it's not the bricks and the, and the, and this map. It's the, it's the community coming together. I'll tell you one quick story and then I, I, I am gonna leave because this is getting long. I apologize. So the beauty of the Y to me is this, that I was at the Meriden Y. And I knew that a gentleman that was walking the same hallways with someone else, gabbing it up and having such a good time. Was a multimillionaire and the other guy next to him was someone that we scholarshiped in and they knew nothing about it. He couldn't care less. And all the money that we get goes back to the community. We're a nonprofit. That's what it's about. So with that, no one's turned away for inability to pay. Sixty-eight percent of the seniors currently would be eligible for, for, for financial assistance on their memberships. And, uh, like I said, I can't say we're gonna hit all the needs, but I know we've probably checked some of the boxes. Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. Uh, John, appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, and, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, always, we're gonna more flash news, but we got a hundred.
Mark.
Yeah, I believe we're good now.
You were telling me two weeks ago, there were some questions about a specific property that, uh, was. I don't wanna say part of a tax sale transaction, but it wasn't the pounds that sale. That sale. That's the, um, similar transaction, it, uh, yeah. Read that we invite attorney out of town who represented the town, it connected with that matter. Uh, to participate, we're all going to answer those specific questions, so. Adam, I see you, thank you for joining us, I'm sorry it's so late.
Justin, um, thank you, Adam, sorry it's a little late tonight, but appreciate you, uh, hanging around to to now, so.
No problem.
We have questions about, I forget how we left it, the questions, was there like two? Let me pull in the question again. Why we, yeah, down here.
Yeah, do you remember one?
I think, I agree, Owen, Kate, Kate, I think one of the questions that came up was, um, in the Kensington Fire Tax. And there was some kind of negotiation with the, um, tax collector on behalf of the town of Berlin regarding the debt that was over the town for taxes and interest. That, um, the tax collector made a discretionary call as to, um, you know, what that amount of the payoff would be. Um, after the the fire tax sale went through, um, and that that decision would be without the approval of the town council. Um, and I think one of the questions was, um, you know, under what authority, if that the case, do you believe that the collector has the discretion to do that? And number two, if so, you know, what is the the basis for that assertion, does that make sense?
Sure, um, the the tax collector was my primary contact throughout the process. I relied on her to direct me as to what the town wanted to do for its tax liens, which were not the subject of the of the fire district's tax sale. But which the purchaser would be responsible to pay after acquiring title through the fire district's tax sale. So what I asked her was, what does the town, what is the town willing to accept? She said she would check and find out, she wrote back to me, she said she just got out of a meeting and the accepted number was fifty-four thousand. So, um, I relayed that to the, uh, the person who was interested in buying the property, he accepted. And as far as the tax collector's legal authority, that's purely an internal matter, the statute refers to the tax collector conducting the sale. Um, it doesn't say anything about the town council having to approve it or anything like that, that's purely a matter of your internal. Uh, rules or practices, so I would have to defer to you on that.
We appreciate that, Andrew, yeah.
Was it necessary for the Berlin tax to be settled at the Kensington tax auction? Was there an advantage for the town to settle at that point, or could it had its own auction and look for for a larger amount?
Well, the town could have conducted its own auction, at the time that the fire district started the auction, which was in twenty thirteen. Uh, we invited the town to do it, and they declined, so the fire district went forward on the au- with the auction on its own. And the notices made very clear that anyone who bought the property at the fire district's auction would be liable for the town's taxes. So, because under the law, the town and the fire district have co-equal tax lien priority, so one foreclosure doesn't extinguish the other. So the fire district held its auction in twenty thirteen, but nobody bid, and the reason nobody bid, we assume. Is because the town was owed so much more, and there was at least, um, a belief that there was a history of contamination on the property. So if the town wanted to do an auction, it could have, it did not, the district tried to do the auction, nobody bid, so it sat postponed for ten years. Uh, it sat on my website saying, anyone who's interested, call. Um, and during those ten years, uh, every now and then I would get a call from someone who wanted to put in a bid. And as soon as I said, yeah, but you're gonna have to pay the town, um, they would either hang up, or they'd say, well, let me ask the town what they're willing to accept. And either they were way too far apart to make a deal, or they just didn't respond. So eventually, in October twenty twenty-two, is when the person came forward who was willing to accept the. Town's offer of fifty cents on the dollar, and the town decided it was worth accepting fifty cents instead of nothing, I guess. Um, and, uh, that's when the sale was able to go through, because the purchaser. Had discussed in advance with the town how much of it he would have to pay after buying it from the fire district, if that answers your question.
And the part A, part B is, so the town could have this sale without having an auction?
The town, the town doesn't have the power to sell property that doesn't belong to it, unless it does a foreclosure, and a tax sale is a type of foreclosure.
But. You're saying the Kensington Fire District had an auction, it was advertised, and the auction went through, and then the town. Accepted an offer without an auction?
No, the town reached an agreement with someone who was interested in bidding. That said, if you go through with your fire district's auction and buy it there, we'll accept fifty-four thousand. Dollars on our tax liens in order to release the lien so that you get clean title. Um, the debt actually doesn't disappear, the taxes are still owed, but they're owed by the former owner instead of being a continuing lien against the new owner. And towns do have that authority, they can suspend a portion of the taxes if it's deemed uncollectible, which in. This case, it appeared to be, because for ten years, we were trying to find a buyer willing to pay both and couldn't find one, the best we could do was finally. After ten years, we found someone who's willing to pay half.
So, if there was a a amount owed on a piece of property, anyone could call up and make an offer, and the town could decide to take it or not without an auction, is that how it's gonna work going forward?
Again, there was an auction, it just wasn't conducted by the town, but because both parties would be owed tax. One of them was willing to compromise, the one that was owed a hundred thousand dollars instead of three. That one said, we're willing to accept less, because if we don't budge off of a hundred cents on the dollar, nobody gets anything.
But but in that auction, you you went up, right, it went up to what, seventy grand or something, what what was the final bid on the town?
No, the final bid was ten thousand dollars, ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, which was the total due to the fire district, plus the costs of the auction. And then, but it came with, that that person bid ten thousand eight hundred, knowing he'd have to write a second check to the town. For fifty-four thousand dollars six months later, which he agreed to do.
Alright, so it it, well, you you.
Forgive me, I attended the auction, and I bid fifteen thousand dollars on the fire district, and you said, no, that's. More than that, that they're owed, we're gonna stop the bidding at ten thousand and award it to this person on the phone, I assumed there was someone on the other end of the phone. And then, we're gonna go on to the town side, and we bid it up to seventy thousand. And that's when I said, no, I don't understand how this works, I'm done, and the other gentleman agreed to that on the phone. I was just very confused, I was bidding, I thought I was in an auction.
You you were outbid, someone was willing to pay more than you were.
I was outbid, so wouldn't that constitute an auction?
It was an auction, that's correct.
I I mean, the the only thing I would say, attorney, you know, is, the only thing that confuses me a little bit was that, so it was open since twenty thirteen. But if you looked at that, just an average person that, you know, doesn't understand a lot of it, which is probably most folks, unless they deal with it, I know there are folks out there that deal with it every day, and they get it, they're looking for properties, but. It it was the Kensington Fire District who won it, yes, I know there was a line in there about other taxes owed to the town, but but. The average Joe, let's say, would would not know anything about that other property, if even if they may be interested in it. Uh, you know, I I I don't know, I just don't, I'm I'm surprised that the town wouldn't be specifically in that notice, it was just, hey, there was other taxes owed to the town in Berlin. On what? I mean, I guess on the property that Kenzie Finn was doing, but it just, the notice didn't seem a hundred percent, um. Uh, you know, there wasn't enough of the information, just from some of the dozen go-bid at those auctions, but how how would I know as a normal government in an auction, maybe not realize it's the same property?
Not know that it was the. I guess I I I guess I don't really understand the question, that there was only one property that's listed in all of the notices.
The town, the Kensington Fire District, I got you, requested the auction, and you held the auction for them. Supposedly that gentleman wanted. What would happen if the town didn't participate, because the town gave no one else a chance to bid on this, there was no notice, no advertising, no nothing. And the town knew that there were three or four local businessmen interested in that property. What would have happened if the town just said, okay, you won the Kensington Fire District auction, now we're gonna have our own? Wouldn't that have been a more logical approach?
So, a couple of things, first of all, it is not true that there was no advertising, um, the statute explains what the procedure is for advertising, and we followed it to the letter. Uh, second, the town could have told anybody who asked. That was interested in the property to call me and to make an offer, as many people did over the ten-year period. And finally, could the town have? Held its own auction, it very definitely could have, um, it never asked me to do one, um, but even if it did. Apparently, it still would have resulted in the same not collecting the full amount of tax that was owed, because the property simply wasn't worth enough, apparently. Um, as determined just by the number of bids that we received during the entire tenure process.
Attorney Cohen, isn't it correct that if the Kensington Fire District had its tax foreclosure sale. The town of Berlin cannot then have its own town of Berlin tax foreclosure sale, it is a done deal, correct?
Well, no, the the town of Berlin very certainly could have done its own tax sale, but the problem is that the fire district would never, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, I mean, after the tax foreclosure was held by Kensington Fire District, and that was, someone won the bid.
The the answer is yes, but it never would have happened, because no one would buy the property at the fire district's sale. Unless the town taxes were already resolved, I mean, I mean. No one would buy the property, knowing that they had this six-figure obligation which would follow, which the town could then foreclose. They just wouldn't, they would, they would not do it, they wouldn't buy the property at the fire district's sale specifically because the town could do its own foreclosure. Why would they buy it and then immediately lose it? And the answer to that question is, they could prevent the town from doing its foreclosure by reaching an agreement with the town in advance. Saying, will you take this much on the dollar, and if the town says no, then that's the town's right, but here the town said yes, at least as it was. Were directed to me by my contact, which is why the sale occurred, and why the town was able to recover, or would have been able to recover the amount it did. All of this became moot because the owner finally redeemed, which means the district got its money. The town kept its a hundred percent of its liens and could foreclose at any time.
Thank you.
Which is why I guess cut the deal wasn't the best deal, now I got got full ride, right, the full boat at the end.
Well, no, because I I, if the town got paid in full on its taxes, I wasn't a part of that, all that happened was that the owner. Or, yeah, the owner exercised his right to redeem, which is to pay off the the fire district tax debt.
But what I'm saying is that the the implication was, they couldn't get any, you know, from twenty thirteen to now, you couldn't get anybody to bid on it, it was contaminated, whatever the reasons were. In the end, that wasn't true, so the town got the full ride, the property owner cashed in, and, you know. So, what, that's what makes me a little skeptical when whoever makes the call. In the town, we'll we'll take fifty cents on the dollar, well, the town got a hundred, a hundred percent on the dollar, and we got our whole lien paid. So, the fifty percent wa- wasn't a good, wasn't a good deal for the town, I mean, we should have just let let it ride, I mean, I I don't see why we would have made that deal, that's my opinion. Wasn't involved in it, but in the end, we, the property was more valuable than I guess people thought, right, I guess that's the only. Like at the end, not you, Adam, I know, I know that.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad that it, I'm glad that that worked, I wasn't even aware that the town got paid in full, I'm glad that that happened. Um, yeah, but just with the information we had at the time, I mean, we've been trying for ten years, you know.
Yeah, has the auction been advertised? After the first advertisement ten years ago?
The auction was only advertised in the sense that it was up on my website, but the law only requires newspaper advertising and return receipt notices at the first time. But, you know, nobody showed up that time, and nobody, and like I said, people would see it on the website and call, I would give more information, and there was only one per. Person who had finally agreed to something that the town accepted, and so there was no one else to advertise to, they were only, they were the only people who were interested.
So, what, at the end, for ten years, so if someone wanted to know, they should search your website.
Right.
Alright, anyone else, any other questions, we good? Alright, thank you very much, Adam, we appreciate your time, sorry we kept you late, um, so, but we appreciate, uh, you being available and answering our questions, so thank you again.
No problem, thank you to the council, good night.
Good night, you. Alright, Mr. Brown.
And I have another time, is, uh, proof. Road replacement, this is something, I'll bet, that's rather than the thirty-one point four one. Reinvestor rate, it's a hundred, so after fifty, just somebody even much money.
Excellent. I I assume this will get proved.
No, I'm good, let's go ahead with the thirty-one call.
So, this will be easy and quick.
Um, we like quick, I guess, and easy.
Right, it's easy, it's an easy call, Bruce Foot Road Bridge has been, uh. In permitting for years, we finally got the Federal Army Corps of Engineers permit, um, late August of, um, of last year. And as part of that, there's a historic memorandum of of understanding, which has to do with the, uh, Simi and North Pistol Factory, which is why there's a trail that's gonna interact with, uh. Uh, Mr. Mahoney's grant program, but anyway, um, we were under the old local bridge program, which was like thirty-one percent reimbursement rate. The state has now more funding into the new local bridge program, that started like, uh, two thousand fifteen or sixteen, at a fifty percent rate. So, um, I'm talking to the DOT rep about this whole project, I said, what can we do? If we, if we were coming in right now, we get fifty percent, why are we only getting thirty-one percent, so they actually, the state is now encouraging. Uh, municipalities like us who have these older projects to come to withdraw officially, and Roche would have to actually send a formal request to withdraw from the old program. Then we we submit a new application by April first, and then the state considers that, and other municipalities are doing that, Bristol, whatever you're doing it. Um, and the DOT rep who actually lives in Berlin is saying, you you just do it, you know, you, they've already funded this, so. I'm asking for permission to have a Roche withdraw from the old program, reapply for the new program by April first, and then when the commitment to fund letter goes back to sign that.
Question, are we sure that if we retract the one, that we're getting thirty-one percent on, then we put in a new one to get fifty percent, that we're still gonna get approved for that bridge?
There's no guarantees, however, the state has said to me, they're doing this, they're encouraging, because they have funding, and they want us to do the bridge, which. Around round figures is two million bucks, so if we don't do it, you're gonna be leaving four hundred thousand dollars on the table.
No, I I understand, yep.
But he did not give me a guarantee, so we sort of, you know, there's a, there's a risk, but we stay in the old program then, they'll say, well, no, you can't. They'll say, well, no, you can't, you stay in the old program.
Okay.
They would probably have, they would probably have to tell us we can't withdraw. That would be the first step. So I'm just thinking about this now, but we say we want to withdraw and we're going to reapply. They know and they say, no, we don't have enough money, Mike. You'll have to stay in the old program. So we're back to square one. But we already have all the permits, we can go ahead. But from what I understand, also Bridgefield, Bridgeport, Bloomfield are being encouraged to do this. So these are big projects. So the state doesn't, you know, and they have this old, I, I included on the packet, old versus new on their programs, on their program requirements, because they recognize people, the community like that are in this 31% versus 50% and it's just not fair. But there's no guarantee.
There's only two things I might guarantee you about that. The taxes. Now, that's the taxes, we know, we know. But that's like, you know. Anyway, well, I appreciate you guys figuring this all it's out. And if there's any other questions? If not, we will go ahead and take, I guess we got three motions on this.
Move to authorize the town manager to withdraw this Bruce Foot Road Bridge number 007020 replacement project. Former state local bridge program which was 31.41% reimbursement rate. Is it three separate?
Oh, yes, it is three separate. I'm sorry, I'm drifting off into the evening.
Second down.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? I, yeah, one for two.
Move to authorize the town manager to work with staff and SLR International to submit a new application for funding on the state's current local bridge program with a 50% reimbursement.
All right, thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Hearing no comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Close, all right, so move.
Move to authorize the town manager to work with the staff at SLR International and Corporation Council to execute a subsequent commitment to funding agreement with Connecticut Department of Transportation following acceptance into the 50% reimbursement program.
Thank you, second?
Second down.
Hearing no other comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Close, so move. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Stein was coming in for the next two minutes.
Kyle, yeah. He's doing, I'm scared. Always finding my. We had a moment, Kyle, it's up, I see someone else in the aisle. Just kind of, as a matter of number six, we're litigating. So we put 40,000 in for one of the top two models. We got fewer now, we have to count. So let's take that one first, Jeff, right?
Started off our budget. By, by August, I spent 10% of my budget on one repair. And that repair was a transmission on Florida. I continued downhill from there. We had no other repairs that needed to be done. All that were possibly. So as we funded this and moved forward through the year, we knew we were going to be short towards the end of the year. We're at that point funding areas for the year. The parts account is primarily for doing maintenance work and some minor repairs. But when you get into some of the major repairs and tougher repairs and boss, six, seven, eight, $14,000 in parts, they just drain. So luckily we drew some good contracts and through the environmental buying fuel futures, you're able to save some money, but unfortunately there's parts.
You get it. Any other questions for Jim? If not, we're going to take a motion.
Move to approve the transfer of $40,000 from the vehicle fuel into other parts to cover expenditures due to increasing cost of parts and largely their jobs for the remainder of the six closure 2024, pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
Second down.
Thank you. Any other, hearing no other comments or questions, you want to motion, all in favor? Aye. Close, so move.
Thank you. Tonight, the number seven is a group of creative funds from land materials to vehicle reserve account. And which is the complete house and selling all the vehicles on auctions, earning some money out of it. Did you might notice that 4500, is that the one that I was calling?
Yep. What?
I would drive this car, I got $400 and $4 for that.
Oh, the 4500 there? 494?
I know, it was last one.
Very, very valuable vehicle.
Oh.
Okay, no insurance for gas, kind of, you know, deal. All right. All right, we're good. No, so we're good. So I think we're good. Yes. Yeah, I agree with you, Jim. Maybe it's good you're at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
Probably a good thing. If there's no questions for Jim, if there are questions, Jim, if not, we're going to take a motion.
Move to appropriate $31,165.50 for the sale of land, labor and material revenue account to the vehicle reserved to be used for the purchase of vehicle account. After non-group starting funding approval by the Board of Finance.
Second? Thank you. And no other comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Close, so move. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
We have the next one.
How's it doing? Look forward to it.
All right. We talked about we talked about this item last time. We finally hear. I queue. Jim, you've been doing a lot of work on this. You want to, you want to, we'll be able to, the council, please.
Sure. So as you know, the expired, we, the option that we had with the Housing Authority expired as part of the Affordable Housing Plan was recommended that the senior housing provisions in the zoning regulations be modified to allow others than the Berlin Housing Authority to develop senior housing in residential zones. The Planning and Zoning Commission passed that regulation change February, it's February 1st meeting. And so we have prepared our request for qualifications to initiate a process to, to see if there's developers out there that can help us develop some senior housing. The senior housing amendment that was passed by Planning and Zoning requires a minimum of 50% of the units be affordable and, and 50% of those units or 25% of the, of, of the overall units be affordable at 25% of the, or 60% of the median income. So I know our, our desire was to have all the units affordable as low and income qualification as possible. You know, we also know the challenges of the financing situation today. So basically what we're suggesting is that we, we send out the RFP, we set up the minimums as provided in the, in the zoning regulations. And we clearly state that the, our desire is that all the units be affordable and at the lowest level possible. And, and we also stay in the RFQ that the town has the option to reject all bidders if you don't find a bidder or a proposer that is proposing a project that you find acceptable. So that's the approach that we're suggesting. And the other thing is, is just in terms of selection method, we're thinking, you know, we get the proposals in, review by staff, bring it to the council with a recommendation. You can then either interview the committee, the developer, you know, have them come to the meeting, explain their project, whatever you like. But that's kind of the process to, you know, kind of shorten the length of time required to get from one end to the other. So that's, that's a quick overview.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, trying to elaborate with, can you look at this?
Yeah, Jim and I, Jim and I.
What do you think?
Kidding about it, it's the right thing, it's the right approach.
Okay, great. All right. Your input. Uh, any, any other questions, folks? Okay, well, I need
You don't want to comment, do you, right?
Let's, I'll wait a little bit longer before I go on, I guess. No, no, no. Okay, so the only question is, we're going to take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to issue a request for qualification for developers for redevelopment of 143 First of All Avenue as Affordable Senior Housing Section. F I Q of the Berlin zoning regulation. State and Development Program is requiring more than 50% of the unit that were affordable, more units affordable at lower income levels can be transferred.
Thank you, second on that?
Cool, before we second that.
Yes, indeed, it's good to move forward. Hearing no other comments or questions, all in favor? Close.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Paul.
Thank you. And, yeah, thank you. Remember, we took all the items that we had requested additional funding for Brownfield Matching Brand and the Rego 501. And Jim, do you want to do a quick down? I'm not totally in the audience. Ah, here we have about how this is going to go because we want this Brownfield Land and Brand so that we can wrap this up and get the apartments for the Brownfield. So Jim, what would be your last of the whole audience?
So we've talked about this a little bit before and appropriated the $50,000 match, which was approved by the Board of Finance. The, the thing, as we saw the request for proposals, there were some aspects of the program that have changed. And what are the, they have a new requirement that if there is housing involved, that 20% has to be affordable. And obviously that affects the developers pro forma. So we had to look at how to best structure the grant. And what we concluded was we're applying for more money than we thought we would to begin with. Uh, we're, we would be doing, and you recall that the, you know, the reason we need more money is that we have because of the subsurface conditions that were discovered after we excavated the foundations on the site. So in the new grant proposal, in the grant proposal that we're planning on making, we would ask for money for geopiers to stabilize the building because of the unsuitable soil conditions. And then also for additional money to address the remediation, increase costs that resulted from design changes that were required, et cetera. So the grant, the amount that we're proposing for a local match remains the same. We're proposing to apply for the 360,000. And then the other thing was that because the 20% affordable is a requirement of the program, we thought it prudent to amend our developers' agreement with, with Newport regarding the sale of the property to incorporate that new requirement into the, into the agreement. So we're authorizing the grant, changing the agreement and appropriating the match to this not appropriate, designating the match for this, are the three actions.
Questions? Yeah.
Move to approve the, approve the attached resolution to authorize the town manager to to the C T D E C B for a 600, $360,000 additional municipal brownfields grant at 889 Farmington Avenue. And if a grant is offered to accept the grant, execute a grant proposal, grant agreement and other documents as necessary to secure and carry out the purposes of the grant to appropriate the grant of up to the amount awarded to the municipal brownfields grant account for 889 Farmington Avenue, subject to the approval of Corporation Council. To appropriate some funds to the municipal brownfields grant account and further appropriation to the Board of Finance.
Thank you, second on that? Hearing no other, no other comments or questions, all in favor? Aye. Close, all right, so move. Motion two.
Move to enter the Seventh Amendment to the purchase agreement with the Court of Health and the state to approve the 20% of provide the 20% of the units that 55 Steel Boulevard be affordable households with family income people less than 80% to the area median for a duration of at least 40 M years, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
It shouldn't be an hour.
Sorry.
That's a long time. I think 40 million, yeah. Forty years, subject to some of it. Okay, hearing no comments or questions. I'm sorry, second on that?
Second down.
All in favor? Aye. Close, so move. And number three.
Move to approve a $50,000 town map for the supplemental municipal brownfields grant 55 Steel Boulevard, Farmington Avenue Development, non-grant account, $50,000 subject to Board of Finance approval of a non-budgeted corporation transfer for this purpose.
Thank you, second on that?
Second down.
All in favor? Aye. Close, so move. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Jim. Good night.
Good night.
Uh, we got some more play. Okay. So much. No, thank you, Ben. Okay, so we'll, we'll get Parker, we'll be in a couple of minutes. Yeah, all right, so we'll take a nomination for the Parker.
I'll nominate Christine Vodkisera.
Yes, we're going to have, thank you. Yes, thanks, Emily. Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none? Close those nominations and all in favor, Christine? Aye. Close, all right, so move, welcome to Park and Rock. And V N A board, we'll go and nominate.
I nominate, don't you? Oopski.
And thank you, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all in favor? Aye. Close, all right, so move.
None. Cindy McKinnon for the V N A board.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, all in favor? Aye. Close, so move.
Now, I think he would also like to go back on to the service.
Oh.
Okay, so she's currently on there.
With, with help, I mean?
Yes.
Oh.
So it'll be number 23.
Oh.
I'm sorry, 24.
24, okay, in the back here, I see in the back. Oh, okay, so we'll take a nomination for Bruce Sterling. Or Cindy McKinnon, nominate Cindy McKinnon for Bruce Sterling. Thank you. Any other nominations for that? Hearing none, nominations are closed, all in favor, Cindy? Aye. Aye. Close, all right, so move. Thank you, welcome back. Okay. Mr. Roche. Much of the reporting for we have. Let's come in. Is that it? No. No, you're off the agenda. Hey, why you can walk the agenda? I don't know. You don't want to talk.
You put a motion to add.
I'll come over. I get you, right.
We got to talk tomorrow. I give you a so I want to talk about the V N A with the earlier departure.
Yeah.
The regulation requires me to notify with about my public health in writing that she's gone because remember we combined the two group of it and the elect and the clinical group are together. And there needs to be the, the regulation tells exactly what kind of qualification that person needs. So they had given me a 60-day window to replace the administrator slash clinical supervisor with the proper qualifications which required me to post the job, which I had done. But at the same time, the clinical supervisor who is currently in the RN needs six more hours of credits in that is required by the DPH that she has already enrolled. So I'm hoping she can complete that. And it is important that we have someone lined up by then, if not, that needs to be another extension, I go.
Okay.
But the last question is, we're getting close to budget season. And the V N A dentist numbers are running down.
Yep.
And revenue, we had a $1,000,000 budget as of end of January, just close to $300,000. So I don't think we're going to hit the $700,000 mark. So one of the things I So, one of the things I, uh, decided to do was to reach out to, uh, partnering to, and Goodman, Waplem is the expert on home healthcare, and we had a department of public health here, used to work on, over many years. And I've asked him to tell me how much I can reduce the V N A budget and the staff while complying with the Department of Public Health regulation. Because there are, you know, we can't just go and take certain positions out and not have minimum staffing requirements, which he has done. And I'm asking to give it in writing, which gave, at some point, I would share with you and with the Board of Finance. In the meantime, I've, uh, Kara Strauss, who the head of, the, uh, chair of the V N A board, reached out to me as well. Uh, very impressive, I think they're very fortunate to have her, giving the board, she's got a lot of experience in, uh, she was in Sonician, or she was at an insurance company doing some consulting, work on it. Very familiar with the regulations and all of that. Uh, so, remember, my, my, part of my job is to make sure that I follow the charter, the ordinance, and we can general statutes and federal common statutes, right, rules of regulations. That our statute requires the V N A force to actually hire the director, uh, the town manager, right? Which, which, it's fine, without, we do interviews, and they can do interviews, and certainly, because they have a lot of people with the proper, uh, with expertise to do that. So, I just met with Kara today in the afternoon to share what I have done with the Department of Public Health, uh, and then also the approach that I've taken with, uh, the Attorney at Shepherd and Goodman, the partner there. And, um, said, but my plan is to, the budget tends to go out next week to the Board of Finance, that, but before I do that, I wanna ask you, the governing board, where you stand on this, because if I'm actually on board, I move forward with this, or do you have any other advice for me? I think at this point, what I'm proposing is to, um, reduce the staff to the level that they are recommended. Then, uh, when I came in, the V N A staff was at eleven, reduce to eight, but I take this approach, will reduce to four. Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, I do not specify the positions, because we talk of the staff, but if I take this approach. And the reason is, but doing that will not reduce the impact on the budget. What I mean by that is, the revenue will also be reduced equally by the same amount. There is no way that we can have a skeleton crew and have revenues at levels that we didn't, we had four, five years ago. They're out there now with the full staff.
Right.
Right? So, taking this approach, we will still have six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar total deficit in the V N A operation. Revenue's around three hundred and fifty, and, um, total expenses, which I produce from one point, eight also down to almost a million, on what, what? But so one of the things that you all might have to accept is as long as the charter requires you to keep the V N A, the Department of Public Health requires you to keep a certain number of staff by law, but, and I do not recommend or advise you to do anything different from that, because you're gonna get a, your license revoked, and a black guy, the town, trying, uh, they'll shut you down.
Yeah, no, we're going to.
So, um, I wanna run this by you, because if, um, I should share this with Kara, and I saw her online, uh, because then you're getting too late. Uh, but I'll, I'll discuss this with the, with the V N A board about the approach that we are taking, and the other one that the Board of Finance, uh, for some reason, they have been very much against, uh, the Berlin V N A serving residents in Livingston, uh, with this field, or in, in other town outside of Berlin, okay? Uh, that's a little silly, because if, if the nurses are not at full capacity, they're paying their salary anyway.
Right.
You might as well go across the town line.
Right.
Get money for that.
Yeah.
We're losing money as a result of that. And, um, well, they have been, they thought we're gonna stop serving people outside, you're subsidizing other town, I'll do it, but understand it'll be.
The Board of Finance is saying that?
Yeah.
Well, do they have the ultimate authority to say that?
Well, they don't have the, uh, do a lot of things, but they will say that.
Well, maybe it's not right then, I, I don't understand, why would we lose revenue?
Because they are.
Makes no sense.
Yeah, but we are subsidizing other town, right, and subsidizing towns.
We're making some money for Berlin, right?
That's correct.
What would?
And part of the reason is, I don't wanna go through this every year.
Yeah.
You know, just every year, get to budget season, and it's not fun for the staff there. They, every day, year, much, they're thinking, who's on the top of the line?
Yeah.
And, and these people have not done anything wrong.
Yeah.
The monitors change, the reimbursements have changed, and we can't compete with Hartford and Trinity Health and Yale and UConn. They have massive budgets for advertising marketing, and
And hospitals.
And they have hospitals, when they discharge. You know, you know what happens, right? They assign their own people, and the only, I've talked about this, the only thing we can do that is to actually have a resident complain to us and, rather complain against the Attorney General of the Insurance Company. I mean, we're the most, we aren't for the U N, it'll be hard, take on Hartford Health, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, Yale, anybody else. So, that's the.
That's a very good operator, wants to do like pro bono work and just kind of represent, to get Hartford Health there, I'm sure he would do that.
Yeah, sure.
I, I, I wanna just, uh, share that with you, because I need to finalize the budget this week.
I don't know, what do you all think?
So, if you, uh, go ahead, we just, we're still, we're still, we'll be able to
Yeah.
Keep up and, uh, take care of all our responsibilities that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what, what I'm doing is, keep the minimum number of staff, full-time staff required, but have the flexibility to hire per diem. Uh, nurses, physical therapists, speech therapists, our screen therapists, um, all of that on a per diem basis. But not have full-time staff is, is, you know, it's expensive because of the benefits and everything, I, I, um.
What, what's the?
What's the census?
Uh, forty now.
Around forty, that's it.
Forty, uh, boy, we're going down, it's, uh.
Forty now, and, and, uh. I mean, earlier, really tried going to express all the
Yeah.
urgencies there, meeting the staff, trying to set up agreements, giving brochures, giving touch keys, you know?
Yeah.
But it's just not picking up, crashing.
It's not, it's the function of the healthcare system, it's not, it's not anything we can do to fix that, that's for sure.
And then.
The only way to do anything would be to go through working with independent practitioners.
Uh.
Yeah, we're doing that.
You know, going to some more pediatric practices, physical medicine and rehab, however, from the amount of individual practices, it'll also reduce it, because they involve a lot of, you know, because it's so hard.
Uh, yeah. Well.
It, it, it is a changing environment. Um, we, does our V N A, and I don't know, does our V N A have contracts with some of the insurance carriers?
Yeah, it's a coalition of groups that negotiate with the insurance carrier, they buy ourselves, don't, they don't want to, talk to us. So, um, and that's the other thing, I mean, you've seen what's going on with Trinity Health and Cigna. Before, Groplex, Trinity Health, and negotiated prices with Cigna. You think they'll return a call from the Berlin union, seriously, no.
No, I just didn't know.
No, not at all.
You know?
Yeah.
They have New England or something like that, where a few of them get together and negotiate agreements, so.
So, 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 i- if you did that, lowered the staff at what, four total? Not, not, not four, four caregivers? Four.
Full time.
Four, four full time.
Including, including.
How many full-time people?
Fifty percent reduction in staff.
How many full-time people are there now? Eight? Full time?
Well, actually, one, but based out because of the last year's budget reduction.
So, are these folks able to, they're town employees, obviously.
They are.
Are, are, are some able to retire? Like, would not that they want to, but.
So, I would rather not discuss.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, I wanna talk to them.
Yeah, no, well, I know, that's what.
I, I'll give you my word, I'm gonna do whatever thing possible to make sure that they are placed in the right place and they are, uh, for the best of my ability, that's really important.
All right, what do you all think, uh?
Well, I'm fine with, will affect the school nurses at all?
No, separate, yeah, yeah, no, separate, because they are separate, but that's the, this charter was put together in the language, uh, there's, the V N A shall be responsible for playing the school nurses, it just takes so much time from, uh, the directors, that every morning, she'll come in, I can make it to the, to ten o'clock, um, termination, it's also written, something in the store. So, made it, but changed their as well, uh, to have a supervisor, we used to have a quarter, and, and this is gonna, sort of, letting it work out well. So, we're gonna have a supervisor manage the nurses there, so it's little time, unless it's, we still need to have it out of line because of the charter says so, but day-to-day operations will be handled by the supervisor.
So, you got four full-time people left, but you're not reducing, uh, seven hundred grand any.
Yeah.
Ha, that's, 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 that's no sense at all, or?
No, yes, because your revenues are going, we're reducing almost four hundred thousand in, um, expenses, your revenue, revenues are going down three sixty.
Ah, Jesus. A mess.
We tried to fix it.
Yeah.
I know, we, we did try, yes, we did, folks voted, you know?
We're still. Okay, those are mine, so.
You know, I mean, we are just a hand, Orange has one, and, um, and, uh, Westbrook has.
Yeah, yeah.
And Westbrook, when even they look at their books, you know, they are including the benefits, they are losing three hundred fifty thousand dollars too, and our salaries are higher here than.
Is there, uh, so could these, uh, the people left go to other towns and increase their revenue? Like, who's to say they don't go to other towns, I, I mean, if we reduce the staff, let's say we
Yeah.
And they have time on their hands.
You need to talk to your Board of Finance.
Well, they can't debate.
Well, they're telling, they are, they were really obnoxious about this, being interacted, one of the reasons she left was because of the how she, how they treated her, like a respect, like a professionalism, understanding, tone. Uh, Kara was very, the chair of the V N A board was in my office, she was not happy with how unprofessional they were to treating towns' town, and not really appreciating the value that they brought in, because these people took an awful care of people, of course, and these are the most vulnerable people in our community. And we didn't really care, we, we cut what we can and release enough, well, I'm telling you, you're not gonna get to a number that is a break even, not even close. So, you're gonna be in a six hundred, thousand dollar, uh, situation.
I mean, the other thing is, if you remember, I mean, I went to the Board of Finance, it was probably twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Because they wanted to know if they could defund the V N A.
Right.
And it's not just a question of what's in the charter, it's also, there's federal law, right, the patients have rights.
Yes.
So, if you stopped tomorrow, you would have, and I told the Board of Finance this in public session seven years ago, you would have exposure to those patients.
Sure.
Because they have federal executive rights. So, it's, you know, it's not just a, there's services that the town, every one of the hundred and sixty-nine municipalities in Connecticut has an obligation to provide these same services. The problem with Berlin is you've got this restrictive charter that says that only the Berlin V N A can provide the services.
Right.
That's, that's what we tried to fix.
Right.
To give the town the option to find
We did.
an alternative that would be not only more cost-effective, or just more effective. I mean, the census of sixteen, seventy-seven?
Forty.
Forty, I mean, it's like, it just keeps going down.
Yeah, it's going down, it's going down enough.
When I, when I went in, it was eighty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was around eighty.
And people aren't having that, not without that.
I know.
So, not trending in a good direction.
Not at all.
And remember, three, four, three years ago, the Medicaid reimbursement, the whole model changed.
The change, right, yeah.
We didn't longer keep paying for keeping patients, twenty days, sixty days, and after that, it drops. So, all of that became a problem, and then, of course, the competition with all the other providers didn't help the situation either. So, I mean, it's not something that the staff did.
No, 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 and we know that.
My, I'm the, I'm out of it, we got that, but, you know, one gentleman that I know who serves me on, on the board, and he's from Bristol, he, when I talked about this, he's, I can't step that fast. I was, they were very close with the Bristol V N A, said, we just going, but it was not in their charter.
Uh, they, what, they just ended it? Yeah, they did. Well, which is what most towns.
Westbrook does not have a charter. They just, well, I mean, they don't have a charter.
They don't?
Meeting.
Oh, it's the town meeting, going forward?
Yes.
Oh, God.
Don't go there.
Must be a disaster.
Don't go there.
Yeah, that's probably not a good place. Uh, nice town, look at that one, somebody must work it through.
They good, good town.
Uh, no, it's a great town, but that must be hard to, to manage, but, uh, well, I don't know, what do you all think? Uh, I mean, I don't understand, we're cutting the staff, let's say, but it's really bizarre, what is our situation, right?
But I don't want a little more.
Right.
Yeah, I guess.
Just gotta be careful of our employees.
Well, that's what I'm concerned with, Peter, I, I, I'm concerned with that too.
Yep.
Well, can you have your discussion, and do we need to do it, what, next Friday, you need to submit the budget?
Yeah.
I do, probably not.
If we have to, we can do it.
Yeah.
You sure? I'm not sure, but. Well, let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, did I really, let us know, right? Like, this is what I can think of.
But I kept, uh, trying more, uh, still work with, you know, uh, others to find alternative ways to, uh, more revenues, but it's, it's a struggle.
Yeah.
Uh, sort of, you know, everybody, you had a chicken soup, and then you had to leave the section, leaving the, to the V N A.
Yeah.
Not gonna happen.
No, apparently not, there was none, but we will, with that staff, excuse me, be able to care for
Yeah.
Whatever, hit the door, if for some reason we need help, we get the per diem side to help us. The folks in Berlin who choose a V N A will have
Absolutely, yeah.
The best care we can pay for.
We have to remember, five star rating, patient satisfaction.
I know, and we still can't.
I could help, yeah, we just don't have it.
Yeah, what's theirs, or, you know?
I've three something.
Now, five stars.
Not five star, no, well, they don't care, they're so big, it's where Hartford Health care, they don't care, I think that's their lineup. I'm sorry to say that, but just had a little problem with them with my life, and I thought, well, it wasn't very nice, it's, uh, uh, brutal, but, um, locally, but, uh, interesting, well, no, I guess if that's the consensus, then, yeah, we're, and that's not an easy decision to make.
No, not at all.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're very, not happy with that one, but.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
What I go.
One, two, one question, when we're hiring a per diem, whether it's a per diem, physical therapist, occupational, we're ensuring that we're at least going to be covering, or at least have some minimal profit to that based on the reimbursement, right? If we're not gonna pay a, a speech therapist, you know, a hundred fifty dollars an hour, you go out to do treatment, we're only getting a hundred.
Sure.
So, uh, uh, another one, and then you take in a patient, um, at that time, the, you do an evaluation that would say you need these types of treatments. So, uh, you need to have all these people on hand, create these, negotiate the prices, all, uh, ready to go, it, you know, it's not something that you negotiate depending on the type of reimbursement you get.
Yeah, but you, but you should know ahead of time, if you know, y- you get the intake sheet, and you have a patient that's gonna need, you know what, they're gonna need physical rehab, speech therapy on thirty days, or X number of, you know, treatments, then we should know, our per diems for physical therapy, we have to pay X.
Yeah.
And for rehab, it's Y, and we know this patient has, I don't know, And for rehab, it's Y, and we know this patient has, I don't know, Anthem, I'm just gonna bet Anthem Insurance, and we get paid this. We should be sure that we're gonna at least cover our costs and not lose on those. You know, otherwise, it's better off turning the patient away to say, sure, go to Hartford Health here.
We're we're, I'm very careful what I'm saying in this meeting, there are certain type of insurance we should not be taking. Because of the reimbursement rate.
Absolutely, that's what most practices.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we should.
Should not do that, right?
Want to get the call, you know, but to do it, but then obviously you can't work around it.
So there's four forty folks in Berlin now using our VNA, and that's it.
Forty people altogether.
I, that's what I'm saying.
Some of them all have a vote.
Uh some are out of Berlin.
Yeah, how many Berlin residents?
Oh, oh, yeah.
I don't know, probably like three quarters of them.
Okay, so whatever, ninety thirty, whatever, so so thirty people out of twenty-one thousand people. No, 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 just just, no, no, I'll get that, so. The huge outcry of of the, the huge.
Where do you go there?
It sounds like something you might even revisit though.
Nah. People just thought we, you know, wow, that was unbelievable to see, and here's the result, no one's even using. And I mean, what a joke that was, people out there stealing signs.
Cost to the community.
Nah, I know.
Look, it's another example of something in Connecticut that should be regionalized.
Yeah.
I mean, some of my towns, larger towns that I did work for, have their own health department, their own nurses, right?
Yeah.
And then you have other smaller towns that are lining up with Yale and Hartford Health.
Yeah.
Um and then you have some outliers like Berlin, that's its charter provision.
Yeah.
Sorry, a hundred and sixty-nine towns, a hundred and sixty-nine different ways to do it, thanks.
Yeah, right, so for the record. Everybody on the council, that's the consensus of the council, we all agree to do, what Roche had suggested.
Yes.
All agree, everybody agrees?
Agree.
Yes, 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 well, I agree, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I do. Not not done lightly yet. No, don't, I don't.
One final item, yeah, you should have the fiscal year twenty-five budget signed and.
Yeah.
I want to just.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's one decision to be made on this. Yeah, uh so March, it's very much first to give the budget to the.
We still got the right to vote.
Yeah, for March uh first, but next week we'll have the budget to the Board of Finance, so they'll have that they need. But this year, doing things a little bit different, but uh not having the town and the Board of Fame the same day, it's a lot.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Goes on till by the third hour, people are on.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, just like tonight.
Yeah, it's very interesting, so.
That was on.
Uh March fourth, we will cover the town budget, revenue, capital transfer, that's why I don't get here.
Yeah.
Council chamber here, still gonna cover the town budget on that day.
And the fourth?
Yeah, all of you will get the package before that, the same time the Board of Finance get, you will have card copies given to you. I mean, uh card, all of you will look at it, especially the council members, put a little information in there. Uh it's been a tough. Chat time to try and.
Yeah.
Any of these numbers, but we'll talk about that later. March sixth, two days later, you'll be the Board of Finance, I encourage all of you to attend.
Well, that was our deal.
All of you.
With the Board of Ed, right, you guys remember that, that was the date, March sixth, when we got to do the joint meeting with the Board of Finance, Board of Ed and. Uh the council.
That's a great day.
They suggested the sixth, so that that was the deal, we would all try to be there.
So that Monday we need.
Yeah.
And then um could be a council, right?
What's that?
Yes.
We have a council meeting on the.
Wow.
And then next we have the.
Joy.
Lovely.
Back and back, and then we have um. The budget workshops, that the Board of Finance will go through the town budget and the Board of Fame budget and make adjustments.
Yeah.
Um and that's lined up here, I'm not gonna read everything, March eleventh, there's one, which is a Monday, then March twelfth, Tuesday. In the regular Board of Finance meeting, they'll continue to discuss the budget, and then eighteen is another number four. Uh March twenty eighth is number five, so March twenty-sixth, we have the annual budget hearing, but we have the Berlin High School. Uh six to eight o'clock, and both the town budget and um the Board of Fame budget will be presented. This is the the adjusted budget after the Board of Finance makes all the changes. Uh if they decide to do so, and then they vote at the end of that meeting to send the other to the council. They need to do it within two days after hearing, so they do it immediately that day, so rather meeting two days. Uh here's the tricky part. Once you do that, e- every year, it has worked out that the council meets the following Tuesday. We're not meeting on April second, because that's the presidential primaries.
Oh.
When when Sandy and uh King set the agenda. It's we, we are not meeting that month on the first and the third Tuesday, meeting on the second and the fourth Tuesday.
Ninth and the twenty-third.
So I.
Is that okay?
It's it's okay, no, this is why I'm asking, you will need to set up a special meeting.
Yeah, we have a certain timeframe, we have to do it, right?
Yeah, so we can't wait till the.
No, till the ninth?
Yeah.
That's what I.
I propose either April first, which is a good Tuesday.
Oh, that's a.
I think it is a five-ten minute meeting.
Yeah.
Uh normally, you vote to send the.
What do you think with that May seventh day, is that like in stone?
May seventh, what, May seventh?
That's like the last day of session, like.
Oh, you're. Yeah, I, so.
Or or that Wednesday, I statistic, a few states precedent, precedent, so.
Yeah.
Only for the primary.
You wanna do the third?
So there's a Wednesday.
Is the third okay?
Does it matter, because we don't even know if it has a primary?
Show one or not.
But if you do, it feels even bad.
Is the third okay, is that all right?
When will we know?
Third, third?
Yeah.
Wednesday, yeah.
The second, third.
You're good.
I appreciate you not doing it the same week as spring break, but the school thing.
No. Just. No, we're not the next week, is the next week?
Yeah, so the, yeah.
Got you.
So no, we have this form taken that much.
Do that, but probably be a sore.
Yeah.
It's not, it's the week of the six.
Two-five minute meeting.
Yeah, there is, you you're wanting to send it to uh.
Nothing's the fif- the week of the fifteen K of April, there's nothing like that, nothing out here. The fifteen.
Oh, it's so, um, Kate was just mentioning this for us. School break is the week of the.
The eighth. The eighth, right, so.
It's um, it's so, I think the sixth is Saturday, so it, yeah, so it's seven, eight, yeah.
That's correct, so six, seven, it's not the, the next week's twenty-third, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Right, so the fifteenth, week of the fifteenth, there's nothing. No meetings. They could think, okay.
It's been the eighth and the.
Okay, that was just checking. Let's go. Yeah, I think in third seems.
Can do it, oh, yeah, six.
Six, better, worse.
You can't even do it by Zoom, that's okay.
I'm probably gonna do the Zoom.
Now, we have to.
It it's a simple vote you're taking, so there's no need for, for, yeah.
Right, we only provide though, if you only wanted to do it by Zoom, we do that. You don't have to have a meeting in person, but it's helped how it.
Those are the ones.
So what was that, May? April, they're.
It's always on Zoom, come on.
I'm fine with April.
We're fine, six P M is good.
Six P M is great.
Hello. Yeah, we'll always say.
So that's April. Okay, so that's the thing, we don't send it back, right?
No. You have to.
We don't agree with it.
Yes, we reject.
Oh, yeah, then you have all the other dates in the back.
You reject it.
Yeah, you you still have the meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't know, so it could take longer for a fight. Just kidding. Yeah, all right, so.
And then you have the other alternative. You don't agree, yeah, represent, they'll go to the back on it, and then back to the Board of Finance and.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's okay on the.
No.
All right.
Okay.
So um. All of this, while not that it's stated final, we're gonna get it out on Berlin citizen.
The what?
Berlin citizens on the public here, when you have a budget meeting, all that. Give it out on social media, Facebook page, town work site, we're gonna put signs outside.
Oh, yeah.
On these people, you know, everybody's a friend.
Yeah.
We'll send, you can collect personal cards to everybody's home.
There you go.
I did that.
We did that last year.
That's right, you did do that.
We got less people coming for the.
We got less people.
Less people coming, people, people said, I don't know, so everybody got a card, attended to their homes.
I think. I think a biplane with a big banner.
I voted in all the referendos.
Banner, cross the guy, my biplane, back to more.
So we'll do all that.
So is the March fourth, sixth, or the public?
Yeah, all all these are public, even the local.
Yeah, they're all public.
They're all public, yeah. All right.
Yes, sir, where are we at now?
I do recall.
Professor, what do we have?
We have a executive session should last.
Minute, thank God, they concentrate to make it. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you for the questions about that, and it didn't answer. And Kim Clark Communication, our Economic Development Commission, our Economic Development. Director did a great job promoting dead pink of rockers, everybody seemed to think it was juiceless. He got three or four businesses very interested in it, he got a grant, had it analyzed for environmental issues. Did a lot of work, put an RFP together, spent hours and hours, involved a lot of town resources. Whole thing was negated by the cap deal that was made. We wasted his time and effort and everything. Oh, oh, we gotta finally have to do that. And he alerted his superiors and and some other people in the town hall with. With that information, the sort of deal was made, and they ignored that, and that's a shame, just gotta make sure.
All the people, what is it, ignored.
Don't wanna relitigate this, we really don't.
We're in the middle of class, that's all we know.
Yeah, I think enough is enough. Yeah.
I apologize for the.
How ways, so we can correct it on. No, corrected. Yeah, motion for the minutes, right, there we go. Yep, uh motion for the February sixth.
We accept the.
Second there.
Nobody objected, all right, what else, um, so we have to make a motion to go into executive session.